Good evening, seeing that it is 5:37 and we have everybody, I believe, we're going to have this evening, I call this joint workshop of the Steel Works and the Budget Committee in order for everybody who might be online, we want everybody to introduce themselves. So we'll start with Lauren Schwitz is the Administrator.
And Joel Wexford, member from Alstead.
And Elizabeth Bascom, at large member.
Sarah Vogel, Actworth member.
Shelley Andrews, Charleston member.
Jamie Teague, at large member.
Kevin Keith, Slidmore, Langdon.
Gabriel Singh here, at large member.
Steve Felicityle, Town of Walpole.
Jerry Henry, Plague Committee, at large member.
Jennifer Merkasey, Town of Alstead.
Responding, Charles Kendall.
All right, thank you, and we do have a good slate of our administrators here, thank you all for being here. Looking forward to what we have coming. But for now, I will turn over to Alrighty. I don't quite have everything that I had hoped to plan on having tonight. By now, I think that you can have an opportunity to go through documentation on our staff list and notice that there is quite a difference from last year. What we learned this year with Bill and I working through positions with our administrators is that there was some cleanup that probably should have happened last year, or perhaps even years ago, I don't know. But that factors into my default budget, because I know what we have eliminated from last year to this year, but that's not necessarily what shows in one budget to the other. And I need to go through that carefully and make sure that I'm capturing all of that to factor into the default formula. So I'm still working on that, because there's a lot of detail there. We compensated for some of those, which was the vacancy management that was suggested, so I don't want, I want to make sure that I'm grabbing all of the pieces that I should be grabbing for the default budget. We have a budget that's up here, I do have for you tonight is the proposed budget, both by locations and by functions and the methods. So we go through this first presentation, and it's by methods. But I think I handed this out to everybody and we have a slight increase in our district costs, we had our oh no, it might be a SL method, I forget. Excuse me, we had some shared services, but there is a decrease, and that is for our middle school shared services. I know that there was a question that was raised about summer school, our summer school has been funded through SRO and we had very low participation last year. And when you look at that individual account, there seems to be an anomaly for the fiscal year 23 actual expenses, but if you look prior to 23 and last year, it's running at about $2,000 or $3,000, so that's was nominal. In our buildings, we had a slight increase in our cost for electricity, we built in, I think, 3%, is what we were using for our cost of living increase. When we went through the facility budget, we used our current snow livable bids and we used a uniform number of events for plows and for sanding and salting to come up with our costs, and we were able to put that down a little bit. As, as you probably are aware, this upcoming year is a negotiation year for our support staff. So as, as it's a negotiation year, everybody in the support staff union is frozen, so that's all of our paras, our custodians, our facility workers, our secretaries. Seems like I'm missing a category, but
Bus drivers.
Yeah, the bus drivers, yes, sorry. And so they're all static, the rate that they're being paid this year. The teachers had an increase in their COLA of 2.5%, and they also had an increase step to step of 2.5%. We proposed a 4% increase for all of the non-union staff, that includes all of our support staff and the special ed department as well as administrators. And our New Hampshire retirement decreased marginally, the rate is set by the state every two years, and it decreased a little bit in both categories this year, I think it was 0.4% in one category and maybe 0.2 in the other. And our health insurance, this year we were given a static rate, it's not a gross maximum rate, it's, they gave us what it will, what the cost increase will be. And because they have gone this route, it varies depending upon the plan and the subscription, so the increases, we use our current subscription rates and participation to budget for next year, and so those rates were applied accordingly. All of those costs factor into each of these categories. Transportation, you'll see there was a decrease, the board allowing to purchase two buses outright this last year instead of leasing them, and so that's reflected in our, our reduction here. Technology, there's a bit of an increase here. Historically, the expenses have been netted by the E-rate benefit that we received from the federal government. That's not a given every year, and nor does that align with gross budgeting, as we're required to do by the RSAs. So the gross budgeting this year means that we're reflecting the true cost for our technology replacement, and then we have the revenue bits coming in as well in our special revenue fund. In Walpole, we had a decrease for eliminating special ed positions that the numbers substantiate that, that we can't maintain that position, so we're eliminating a special ed teacher. We have a LEAP era that we're also eliminating. We're doing this through attrition. We had a 0.6% nurse position that was in North Walpole, and when we prepared the budget last year for this year, that was moved to the high school. So that's also reflected in this reduction here for Walpole. Are you in method six? I've jumped in there, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's alright.
So the Walpole, the special ed teacher wasn't LEAP, so that would have been to the Walpole community, as well as the nurse. The LEAP position, I don't remember if that was a one-on-one or inclusionary, so I'm not sure what I'm meaning. I think that, I, I know that this is important for tax write-calculation, I think that the, if you flip over to the next, you're the next slide, yeah?
Just to go back to student services, I don't think we covered that.
Okay, I was trying to say
Method six, yeah.
So student services, so there was a substantial, we, we were anticipating some significant student needs this year, and we had budgeted for it for this year, and that is no longer the case for next year, so we reduced our, our district placements and our resident costs by quite a bit. I know that there was also a variance, if you if you're looking at the account and the variance in, in contracted services, there's a significant variance, because we weren't able to hire people this year, so we had requested that we have be allowed to make the budget transfer from wages and benefits into contracted services. That was about $418,000, I believe. So that is, you'll see that when you're comparing. I think you had a question about that.
Yep, can you just reiterate that point?
So we, we weren't able to hire a number of positions, so we came to the board in September and requested a budget transfer to move money from the budget lines for salaries and benefits into the contracted service line. So that, that's showing as a significant variance in our contracted
You know what the account line number is?
1, 0, 1, 2, 0, 0, 3, 2, 3, 0, 0, 6.
3, 2, 3. That's a reduction. That's the big reduction.
Right, because it went from like $600,000 for this year, and then it got dropped, well, the contracted services were bumped up this year excessively.
For 25.
Right, for 25, and then we're reducing it for next year, because we're, we shifted monies back into salaries.
The lines that they belong to at the beginning.
Yeah.
But not a lot, because the wages are down too, 187, 194, 187. The first two, wages fed teacher, wages fed extended year coordinator are down.
I need to verify with, with Xander about the coordinator, I noticed that today as well.
Okay, so that may not be correct. Are we going to go back to all the other questions on the other methods, or do you want to do it?
Yeah, but you know what, that'd probably be better if you guys just throw me questions and I'll be able to
But we don't want to mess up where you were headed.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Yeah. And then the goal is to also get to the justification, that I shared the list of that, and talk about that process again too. I will tell you that I know we've talked about that the process changed a lot this year. What I learned was that there were some gaps as to who picked up what, because there wasn't a clear understanding of that, and we'll work on that for next year, so I think one of those gaps that I think that I've usually done, but it wasn't a salary item, so I didn't think to do it this year, because it fell to the high school, was SRO, so we need to budget for an SRO, and I'm not, not throwing anything in the way. It's, we didn't, as much work as we have done on this, we did not have a lot of opportunity to sit down and go through line by line after everything was built, so we didn't catch that, I didn't catch that. So that SRO number needs to be built in. So in method one, I'm sorry.
I have some questions about comparing Langdon to Actworth, because they're similar sized schools. Actworth's teachers' wages are going up by $9,400, Langdon's teacher wages are going up $15,598.
So we had several lane change requests as well this year, we had like 27 lane request, change requests. I'm trying to open up my software here, just so I can.
I just sort of expected to be close to being flat, because we also have a brand new teacher there who is
So you said that Actworth went up more than the other
Actworth went up $9,400, but Langdon went up $15,598. Right, we're up, we're up 58, 14, 15% total. It's just, there's a lot of things on there that just seem kind of black, like health insurance for Actworth is $13,000, for Langdon it's $29,000.
It's a single plan, the family plan, it's the people who were hired into the jobs that were
I'd like to check out, because it seems there's a $5,000 popped out? I'm not sure it's popped out for lady services, what's, does that mean?
So that means that the individual chose not to take health insurances, and they're getting one popped out instead of payment?
So is that a teacher?
It could be a teacher or an aide, or I mean, we're all eligible for that?
Just kind of thinking back on what Kevin is asking. So it's page one of tab 13, I don't know if that helps anybody. What I'm looking at for the health insurance in Langdon, it went from $38,000 to $68,000, and that just does seem like a big jump, and we haven't added any positions.
So we had a change in, in employee. We also have a 10% increase on our most popular plan. So I, well.
So in that line, is that I mean, you know we have
We also have shared, we have shared positions there, that, so if, if you work in the, if you work in the Alstead attendance area, and you're shared over four buildings, your costs are also divvied out over the four buildings?
In that teacher line?
The health insurance line is across all, they don't break out health by teacher support, non-union, it's all catch-all for everybody who lives within that location.
The only differentiation is what life's funded.
So can we just ask, that you go through and verify all those that have like, you know, 183% increase, 76% increase, 1,733% increase for the insurance popped out, the health insurance for the nurses went up 1,132%. We just ask that you please go and check all those, make sure that they're accurate, because it just
So I will tell you that
I think if I looked at Actworth, and it's like, we're very similar. Actworth's increase, based on the backside of this page, is $32,000 versus Langdon's is $58,000? Did the calculation, we have a one, if our increase is more than 78, or a $78,000 budget increase, our mileage rate goes up by $1. And it affects how I can vote on other things, other asks, because I want to keep that below $1.
So in the materials that were handed out this evening, it has the document that changes, it shows the change from year over year in the portion of it by method, so that will be helpful for the discussion, as per your review as well, I think.
Looking at the back page, it wants you to hand it out.
On the moment, yeah. Yeah, I'm talking about it. In, in this bundle, in the different tabs for the methods, it has select for method two, that doesn't change, so the method three changes, so it's three is tab seven. Property values, so there was, there was changes there. Most of those went down a little bit, which was good. It wasn't the huge significant increase that we saw last year. The transportation, I looked at that closely, and we had a different, a little bit different allocation of the buses based on hours. So there, there are those factors as well, that I definitely will go through and verify and, and everything else, so what I the changes here, what I did find is that the support staff longevity numbers, when those got entered in, some of them were entered in, in duplicate, so those were corrected, some of them showed up as health insurance, those have been corrected. So I am, I have been aware and have been trying to be very careful about that, I will look at it again.
I would make a suggestion, it's more work, but it goes to the questions that folks from the different towns are going to ask you, right, that we need to be somewhat prepared for. So when we're talking about the FTEs by location, so if, if there's a way, I know there's a way, you've just got to data mine it, right, but there's a way to show how many teacher FTEs, how many support staff FTEs, how many, and you gave us the big huge list, I have the list, right, and I can probably sort it and total it myself. So within those pockets, like if you could look at Actworth and say there are two single plans, one family plan, one cash-in-lou, right? Then we'll know that the difference in the dollar amount is probably predominantly, other than the 10% increase, right, due to an election change. Because probably what happened is the prior year person left, and they might have been a cash-in-lou or a single plan, and the person coming in is a family plan, and so when you make that adjustment, it's large. It will provide, it will, believe me, it can blow your budget up sideways, fast.
So you want FTE by category by building?
I think that would be helpful, Lori.
Okay, well, I just, I'm just
Yeah, yeah, so I think if you took the list that you gave us with all the different FTEs, and we just rolled it back up and said, okay, this is the amount that belonged to Charlestown Primary, and within that, within that budget that we have here, there's a total of this many single, this many two-person, this many family, this many cash-in-lou. Because then as we're comparing the locations, it will, it will make more sense.
Okay. And you, did you want the FTEs by aides, teachers, support staff?
I think, I think, I think just, you know, teachers and aides, and I mean, is the budget committee, because we talked about this at our meeting, if they want more breakdown, they'll speak up, but I think if it's done by, by teacher and aide, and then just other,
Okay.
because there's not a lot of other.
Right.
There's a few, they're usually non-union or custodial.
Right.
Right, and so I think that would just, you know, it provides a base, so, you know, and obviously you're not, you're not necessarily going to go back to last year and look that up, because we're not sure, you know, you didn't build that one. But at least this gives us a base for later to know what's included, and then as we move forward, we'll have that a base.
So I should just keep my mouth shut, but I did build the budget for this year, so I should be able to answer to that, but we built it in a very different deliberate manner this year.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
So, so in, you know, positions, I could look it up from last year. And benefits, but for other lines, for most other lines, there were multiples numbers, and I can't compare in detail, so so for a specific example is within the 2320, so the superintendent's office, there were some fluctuations in, in activity, I didn't use multiples numbers, I, I was very deliberate, and so
Yeah, so I think the best you can give us is, you know, and with us knowing that maybe the first year is a little bit wonky that we're comparing, that would be, you know, I think that might be one of the things on our wrist to come out of the budget. So, and I think it would help the board too, because then they'll be able to look at it and say, oh, Actworth's got somebody, you know, got this many FTEs with this many plans.
Right, so I know, Kevin, you had asked for explanation for changes, anything over $2,000, is that?
It's been weeks.
It was a really low amount. I just wanted to do
Steve?
Yeah. Competency. I'm really happy to see that team did a great job looking at all avenues and things like that. We're going to be meeting in a couple days, or another week, meeting. What's the competency in the numbers that we're looking at? Are you 90% confident that they're good, 50% confident?
I know that I need to, I know I need to double check with Xander on that, on the extended year coordinator, and I need to the SRO. I'm pretty confident that we're in pretty good shape.
So what I'm looking at is
Pretty good shape.
Pretty good shape, okay.
Yeah. It, it's, it's going to be better next year.
That's okay.
But it's, it's in pretty decent.
I think, okay.
I have a lot of questions, not a lot of lines, but I don't know that that's the best use of the time with everybody sitting there.
Doing the justifications and then
Maybe do that, and then ask the, ask the line, I have any questions or I don't know what the best way to be
I feel like the line item questions need to get asked, so we have all the information when we make decisions about additions, because I've got some things I'm just not sure and comfortable with.
Right.
Is there any, anything else you'd like to present to us before we
No, just, yeah, just
How does everybody feel if we go to the method one, and just start from there, and everybody can ask their method one questions?
Because we probably have the same one.
Probably.
And then I can also look up method
So, let's see, page two, the, all the ESL pieces.
So this is tab number five of the ESL, those are all, it's going in the new section again. That's where we had talked about last year, was method six versus the method one.
Okay.
And so it needs to be which method?
It should be in six, is what you're saying, so then why is there health insurance, dental insurance, and other associated costs that say ESL's still in one?
In the handout from today?
Yeah, page two.
Page two.
$20,200.
Okay, I will get those moved.
So, it could be clear, ESL services are in method six.
And you've got teacher costs in there, so $130, $141,000. So I don't think the move got completed, or maybe it's the date that it was run with.
I don't know.
It might have been the date that it was run with or the timeline.
Oh, yeah, I made the change.
So all of these should go to six?
Yeah, they should all.
All ESL, maybe, just the
Yeah, no, it
No, all of the ESL, the 1260 function.
The 1260 function.
I apologize, I'm really I'm just questioning that one, because I really am trying to remember back to a discussion that we had about putting it in method one, because it's not actually a special ed-related service?
It's not, it's regular ed.
It is regular ed, which is
So, so perhaps, so perhaps hold on moving now. Because it looks like the only thing that got moved was the support staff worker at this point. And maybe the return. Because we have a
Okay, so they were moved from '06 into '01.
They were moved from six to one.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the move you made, you made that one.
So it is in where it should be. Okay, because
Your, your thought, your thought on it was correct, that it went from six to one, I couldn't remember.
I've had to go back and kind of look, so
Because it's not fed, it is regular ESL.
And so in, in the new one, it is in method 1.3, it's in method one.
Correct.
Okay.
So why is there no support staff aide? Was it cut? Because there's nothing there.
So, so we had originally, the only reason we have aides this year is because we weren't able to hire teachers.
Okay, got it.
So I did not layer them. We used money from the teacher position for the aide position.
Okay.
And that's why.
Okay, that, so that explains the zero in the non-teacher ESL, those go together, and they're correct. Okay. What about the $94,000 reduction in 1260, 321? Is that correct? Because we didn't have to outsource it, because we hired the bodies. Because we didn't have to outsource it and be hiring bodies. 1260 321. ESL professional services instructors found $94,000.
So there was. An assessment that we felt was basically categorized for last year, so we moved that. And so I think that that might be it, we did the 94 agreement about. But we also had to contact out services this year that we are trying not to next year. So the aide and the contracted services this year were funded through the teacher position and benefits.
The nurse was a cut. On method one. Next page, page four, it says wages, nurse district wide, method one. It's low by, it's cut, it's gone. It's 29,870.
So we had a position that we did cut, right? And the LPM.
That was last year. We cut it last year.
Yeah. Still have method one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Insurance on page 11, method one. Says school board liability insurance, and it's at zero.
Yes. So that's because of Primex doesn't separate out though.
That's why it's so high in method three?
Yes.
So that was, that's been an ongoing discussion that I can't make it.
Right, yeah, they don't break it down.
They don't break it down?
Yeah. And we switched the Primex.
As a live person.
Okay.
I have one question. It's page 12, and it's version one point two, so perhaps it's changed. I have a question about retirement superintendent. And it's showing a zero as per, right, on page 12.
Section five. I know, and section 13 on one point three.
Oh, is that, so it's big?
All right. I wasn't even gonna take these nice options.
So what is the question that it's not?
Nope, just that there were zeros there, and I know we had paid that out when she retired. And so there should have been something there, I just wanted to make sure. So let me, I'll go to this one. Time at the 145.
One point three. Retirement's following this week, superintendent. It's there, nine seven, ninety eight, seventy nine.
Right, so I see that for last year.
Yeah.
But I'm looking back for FY23 and FY24. Did we not start her payment, so this is the first budget?
I don't know, it got budgeted somewhere else. Probably got, probably got budgeted. Yeah, it probably got budgeted in the regular superintendent line. It's probably over, if you look at the. If we'd have missed it, somebody would have been yelling.
Yes, so we have, I will tell you that that's been one of the first projects was to. Very carefully review and rebuild that schedule because there were some corrections for miles and lengths. And so we have, we paid some people that shouldn't have been there this year that he's collected. And that may happen last year as well, so we have vetted that and we have a solid schedule that won't be happening.
All right. I don't think, I don't have anything in method two and anybody else.
Anybody else good with method one?
Just the property insurance moved someplace else.
Primex lumps it all together.
Yeah, well, yeah, so I break out, but the property insurance is in method three.
Okay.
But the, the, the board liability insurance, there isn't anything.
Yeah. Yeah, somebody had budgeted it in method one. Property insurance. But it's moved, because I saw it was a lot higher in that.
You just give me a rundown. That took me back to last year. I spent like hours trying to figure out how to code an invoice for insurance.
All right.
So in method two. Second line, page one. Industrial artists supplies are gone to zero. Health class supplies, they rolled up somewhere else.
M two is from the middle.
It's on metals, and so it's, it's teachers that rotate, and I think that. We did, yeah, it's all those people in health that, that's not, doesn't have clear ownership, so.
So those probably need to be put in.
Yep.
Okay.
I know those are traveling little berries.
Yeah. Good catch. Yeah, I'm figuring people at zero in and out and getting the money somewhere else.
We don't have the two.
Do you need to check all of method two? Cause you got zeros all the way down through this.
It was, the summer program, I asked about that, and it hasn't been. It was funded through S R, and it was robust during S R, and it hasn't been robust otherwise. It's been running $2,000 to $3,000, so. Um, I, one area said that they don't, them kids, they lose like the, I think the Title I program. And Chris, I think Alstead had one, I mean, eight people last.
Not you and Chris, but.
So Alsted has a Title I program, also Charlestown had a Title I program, K, K five. Last year, we had about four of these kids in Charlestown participate in our Title I program through the summer.
So it's within your own budgets.
It's within, it's, it's within the Title I grant that they have the support summer programs.
Okay. So, but double check into, all in twos. So it looks like a zero, but it's actually a private grant.
Is that something we should pick up in terms of when we amend the methods, taking that out of method two and putting it to direct cost?
Yeah, probably, when we talk about that, yeah. Yeah, we'd have to look through all of these and figure out where this is going. Then we'll buy.
Don't you have costs within your individual budgets as well for middle school, for the shared position? And I thought this was primarily for athletics. But that too.
Was my understanding.
No, it's for, it's usually what, music, language.
I mean, those positions are in the buildings.
They don't move anymore?
They, they do, but it's like a third, a third, and a third for budgeting.
Yeah, cool.
So we share, at the middle schools, we share a cultural studies teacher, a health teacher, and a college and career readiness teacher, a third, a third, a third, based on trimester. And each of those folks have an individual budget. That they, you know, in the budgeting season, they are in one location, and when they're actually implementing that budget, they are not necessarily in that same location. So there's that piece of the shared among the middle schools, and the other piece shared among the middle schools is the athletics component of the regional athletic program. And the supplies and associated costs that, that. So both are shared. I know that, for instance, I budgeted for. College and career readiness, because that's the educator I had in my building this fall when we were carrying this budget. I can't speak exactly to where it was put into the budget, but I can tell you exactly what that person has asked for.
So, so they're, you're budgeting at each of your locations for who you have on site for that, that term. Gotcha.
Yes, but they're putting into the budget the amount they need, I believe, for the whole year, when they're covering all three. And so if it's staying within our, like, I'm 200. So if it's staying within 200, over a quarter every three years. It, it's coming out in the wash, if that makes sense. Can you interpret that?
I can interpret it. It's not how it was done historically.
I, I'm not saying that's currently how it's done. I just, so under the data points that I get and where it actually lives in that.
Well, I'm glad it's not being budgeted for twice, so that's good, right? So, so I think we need to look at method two and how it's written, and then.
But I know, is it, is it not just athletic?
Here we all.
I'm looking at method two, and it's very basic. Does not include the, the itinerary, salad.
It's the coaches.
Junior high B-team soccer coach, all district-wide junior high sports teams, the student services coordinator, elementary guidance coordinator, itinerary, teacher equipment. And then information, technology, services, techs, equipment, and telephone expenses.
So itinerary, teacher equipment goes there. But everything else is not listed there. Interesting. Okay, I don't know.
So we need to take a good hard look at that one.
But if they're spending almost the same amount of money, I mean. Field, then I guess it's okay, cause each person's doing a third.
In the grand scheme of things, we've been probably.
Probably not huge amount of money.
But.
Interesting. Okay. Going right along now, definitely. Page two, equipment service contract is up 11,714. I don't have any sheets. What, maybe you knew from the last go around, cause I lost mine. Are you justification sheets?
Oh.
No, that's a lot.
Yeah, I don't.
That's just the value of this thing. You want, no, I don't even have it in mind. No, we don't have one.
So the equipment service contract is. Primary for, in facilities, primarily the Johnson Controls. And they are. At such point in time as we sign off and agree that the, what's the town bill, substantial work has been completed. We go into a maintenance.
Completion.
Yeah, we go into a maintenance period, and there was a new cost involved with that. So we budgeted for that if, in case we get to the point where we decide maybe a new one to that next phase.
What does it cover? What is it for, Bill?
It's, it's, it's for the, they're having to do the test to make sure that they're meeting all their assignments. It's over a three-year thing that Jim signed before he left.
Okay.
And substantial completion for the control. It's. I, I don't know the exact amount right off the top of my head. Eleven thousand, one year, twelve, the next is progresses up.
Okay.
To fifteen. I did, I have the exact figures in my office.
So it's for, it's for this, the.
Hey, age factor.
Age factor. That was part of that upgrade?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then the property insurance is where it moved to here.
Right.
That's on page three, guys. That's third going for the property insurance. Cause it got moved from, yeah.
I think it got moved. When we, when we demoed it for hundred good services.
I don't know.
And then we get moved again.
I don't know, but I think it's sitting where it's supposed to.
Chris? Yeah, this may be ancillary, but I don't think it is. It goes to Johnson Controls. Their software is proprietary. So I had a problem with it when Jim Fenn was moving forward with that, Jim Fenn and Lori at the time. So I do think that the school board should look at that. Protect, proprietary software, I'm running these mechanisms. If it puts us in a. Not so beneficial relationship. If you ever want to change to a different vendor, you have to spend a lot of money to upgrade. And that's not how proprietary controls on that is kind of phasing out. The industry's going in a different manner. You can jump in, change a vendor, and it's just switch. So I think the school board needs to relook at Johnson Controls contract.
No, thank you. So if you guys throw me the account code when you have questions, I can put it in.
Steve, can you, can you explain what's going on with insurance on the bottom of page three?
To the property insurance?
The property insurance, yeah. We went from twenty-two, zero to fifty-seven and twenty-four, and then went up. We didn't budget in twenty-five.
It's in method one. That was the one you talked about.
Okay, so now it's back in method three.
Where it belongs.
Okay.
And that's the insurance for the buildings?
Yeah. Yeah, and they switched insurance company. So they went with Primax. It used to be on the open insurance market. So as the market went up, Lori, I think it was Lori, switched to Primax because they were sure most of it. At the one point in time, Primax was higher than the open market, but.
Yeah, now they're primexing ten.
Yeah.
All right, anybody have questions on method four?
I have one regarding special education transportation. It was my understanding that all transportation is in method four regardless of what it does. And so I'm wondering. Why we may have some drivers in method six.
I would have to look at the methods just to see if I saw something of it. Would need to be. It also ties into the, one of the additions we'll be discussing after, because there's question about moving on the document, what method it goes in, whether it's four or six. So we have a van driver that is in method six, and if I'm not mistaken, the vans run just. A special ed, right?
Yes, the van runs to Roundville.
Okay. We, we have another bus driver, and we're, I'm not sure why. In method six, in method six, we have two drivers in method six.
That could be the one that, that can run.
So we have two, two run.
They're out of district.
And so that, I think that that's why.
I think that's. I think that's why they're in method six, is because they are out of district, and out of district costs usually run to method six, right? So, so you can just go back like four years or five years or maybe eleven, I don't know, eight, nine, and see.
If I'm really questioning something, I usually.
You go back nine, that's good.
Yeah.
And just see if, I think that's why, cause if.
It makes sense. I just, I want to know.
Just out of district, which those two would be, that's all they, that's all we did.
Okay, then good, then that'll.
And because that goes into reimbursement for special education reimbursement of costs, it's, it's part of that. I have something on this one. So the insurance for transportation is down because we transferred to a primary.
Okay. Okay.
Nice job. Voice communication is up eight thousand almost.
So we, we put that out to bid and it's offset. Um, there was an offset with, um, delivery funds, I think, because it was the, um, infrastructure.
Did the repeater? Uh, is that the repeater? Why is the voice communication for transportation up eight grand?
We no longer have a repeater. We got rid of the repeater when we wanted the new, new radios.
Okay. So is this a service that we have to pay for?
So we have to pay for, we have to pay for service. We have bases and radios and everything.
Okay.
Um, we also, um, well, I don't think that factors into it though. I was gonna say cell phones, we've worked on that allocation as well. Or because it was more of a facility.
And then mechanic consumables, looks like a brand new line. Were we not budgeting before? We just wanted to break it out?
We just wanted to break it out.
Yeah, we broke it out.
He's, he's been doing a fabulous job of saving monies and we wanted to.
Show it.
Be able to better track it.
Nice. Um, wages, regular driver transportation, these are support staff workers, but it's showing an eleven percent increase. Do we add one? Do we like add an FTE? Because an added FTE would make sense there.
Yeah, let's see, let's think that.
I'm sorry, twenty-seven, twenty-one, one thirteen. It's method four. Oh, there it is.
We have two vacancies and the vacancies, um, we've been budgeting had a good, like a.
So they weren't budgeted in the prior year because they were. All right, so that was a vacancy management. Possibly, not men, not, not, maybe not men, but a girl. So I think the FTEs managed thing would help. Bus lease is because we did ninety-five thousand savings. Uh, twenty-seven, twenty-one, seven thirty, five grand for equipment transportation. Is that because we have new buses? Okay, all right. There's, there's nothing there, so we're from five to zero. We want to make sure we're not missing something.
Yeah, because we moved, we moved, we, we have no, we're not, not getting any new equipment. We moved all of our stuff into, um, supplies.
Okay, so that's part, that covers part of that other new line.
Correct, correct.
Got it, thank you.
But anything, anything that's under five thousand dollars, this is the supplies and. The government just changed it again, didn't they?
Yeah. Homeless transportation, nothing budgeted because we're not expecting.
It goes through Title One.
Grand one, okay.
So that is somewhere.
Yeah, we have, we have a, a decent set aside in our Title One, uh, for maintaining that.
So that goes for the homeless transportation as well?
Yeah.
The special revenue, yeah. Good for me.
Good. Anybody answer a question on method four? All right.
Thank you for the breakdown asked by.
Are there questions on method five?
I'm assuming the seventy-one thousand, the fifty-seven thousand savings between the wages computer tech and the wages tech integrator is just like.
Well, and the seventy-seven thousand is because we're gross budgeting for technology and it's in supplies instead of equipment because we're special.
This is our wages. There's a big foot in.
There, and yes, we did, we changed positions.
Okay.
Every title of position.
Okay.
Method six.
Well, I thought we did.
So I just want to make sure. I think I see it in the new one point three version, but we, the steps program is in method six now, you know, from CPS.
So.
We talked about it last year.
We did it last year, um, where the teacher is in method six because District Y. And right now, all of our participants, unless something's changed recently, all of our participants are Charlestown residents, so all of the aides, um, are charged to Charlestown. But if we had, um, other people come in, students from other districts, from other areas, sorry, come into Charlestown in the steps program, their aid would be charged back to their community, just as we do with LEAP and Focus. Or I just want to make sure that is there in one point two, all of the wages and everything, all of them looking in CPS and not in method six. So I think I'm seeing it. So thank you.
It looks opposite of what you just said, because the teachers, a savings of seventy thousand. But I don't know that. What's the one teacher on the very beginning?
Could we, um, we have, we had a teacher in Vet Lab, and then we had somebody else that's doing the work. And they're, um, expected, they're anticipating moving next year. So we have an anticipated vacancy at a lower rate, but not that much, so I think.
It's zero. So can you check that first?
Yeah, I'll double check that.
I think, but that line is not the steps program.
Which, what's the count? Twelve hundred?
It's a spec.
One one twelve.
Oh, oh, six. So it may be that it was moved.
So, well.
We need to double check it.
It's not steps. Steps is twelve oh two.
Okay, it has its own, gotcha. All right, and you talked about the savings in the clinical services, all right.
And I need to also look into the extended year.
And then we went down in admission costs, that's great. For now. Um, there's a zero on the special ed equipment line, twelve grand to zero is kind of frightening. Page five.
Yeah, I saw, I saw some zeros there. We can have it here, so.
Need to double check that.
Double check that.
So zero in wages, specialist for focus, that's right. Looks like we had somebody and then it went away.
So is that what, is that, uh, what number then?
One, is that twelve oh two, one sixteen? Page eight, I'm sorry. Off of page eight.
I'll, I'll look into that. I don't know. Will we be losing one of our specialists in focus?
In focus?
Yeah, focus specialist.
We know. We have helping physicians right now.
Yes. With the, with the, okay, I'll double check that. I think that, that might be in another line.
Okay, thank you. Oh. There's one down below at twelve oh three, one one two, says wages focused teacher, and it was zero.
Oh, you know, so I know what it was.
Okay.
They were in the wrong, wrong, um, they were in the last year's budget for some reason.
Oh.
And they should have been in, um, they were associated with.
So oh two is LEAP and oh three is focus.
Yes.
So it dropped down.
Right, right.
Okay, got it. My goodness.
I know, it's, I'm trying to get it so we're not. If you clean up, it's gonna be done. They will be done.
Student testing is down ninety-two thousand. We talked about that, right?
So that was, yeah, we didn't feel like it was. Kind of gross, but. I think you're gonna find it in twenty-two ten.
Okay. Wages, like services is up. Is that an FTE move?
Um, we've had it, we've had the position open, but then we budgeted it, we transferred the monies.
Oh, gotcha, so it came back up.
Yeah, so that was going back.
That's okay, so that would get advanced part.
Software licenses.
I'm sorry?
Software licenses is now here, ninety-six thousand.
So software licenses of.
Um, so what's the, the count code?
Uh, twenty-one, twenty-three, six fifty.
Ninety-five.
What it is. It's iReady software.
I ready.
Yeah, it's just, it's a, an assessment software.
So it's paid for by a grant. Wasn't it paid for by a grant?
No. So it includes math and reading diagnostic, individualized instructional app and teacher toolbox for instruction. Yeah, that's the end of the.
Oh, that they might have moved. That could be. So is it a swap between those two? Like we got rid of the ninety-two thousand dollar contracted service student testing and we went to iReady? Can we ask that question?
Yeah, what's the, what's the contracted ten?
Twenty-one, twenty-three, three ninety. Yeah, it might be. It might be that they switched programming. They probably paid outsourced and now we're bringing it in-house.
Yeah.
Catch. We use iReady.
We used iReady for a long time, I think.
I think it was paid for in the asset line.
It was paid, yeah, it was paid for in asset.
We had it even longer than.
We had iReady since.
That was a while, I think it.
We're absorbing it.
Doc choose iReady. He's now in high school, so it's been a while.
I, I think that, that, I mean, I'll verify with, yeah, for still again, but I'm pretty sure that that move is, um, because that's a marginal increase for software. And it's a software, it's not a.
Yeah. Just, it's not, we didn't outsource, yeah, it's a software.
Right, we, yeah, we just, um, we wanted to correct you on the other.
How about? Uh, no, that looks okay. Employee on teachers and teacher that, okay.
Okay.
While you're looking for your next one, if I may ask for clarification on, you explained somewhat before with a special ed clinical services M six, oh, hundred and three two three. Can you describe for me the timeline on how the money moves around? Because last year we budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand. Is what we approved, this body approved. And then what is the justification for money moving around after that?
So we weren't able to hire the people that we needed to hire to provide the services. So we went to the board in our September meeting and asked, uh, permission to, um, transfer funds from our wage line and benefit lines to contracted services, uh, and it was about four hundred and thirteen, four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, and at the same time, we also asked about moving the nurse position from North Wallfold to the high school. Um, and so that's being factored in correcting, um, we wanted to make sure that we did that before we're setting tax rates with an unfortunate schedule because we wanted that to be kept in there.
And what did the four hundred and fifty-one thousand go towards?
Um, contracted, so I mean, like we're paying for people to come in and do the services so we can meet our legal obligations. So when, when we have to pay, uh, a contractor to come in, it costs a lot more than it does to hire somebody paid to that.
Are, are those?
It's like sites.
Right, are those firms that offer professionals or do we go out and solicit like a traveling nurse would be solicit?
No, no, they're, they're through, um, uh, yeah, yeah, they're through agencies that specialize in these services. All the west central, this, there's a rest, there's, there's educational, something.
Yeah, so we could probably get a listing if you want. Then that part.
Would you say just because this one, the budget is special ed?
Can you ask your question again?
Sorry. Would you say that the biggest risk that this budget is special ed?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, always. To every school district everywhere. You don't know who's gonna move it.
Yeah, I understand. We're not just, we're gonna get context for this. And about that, it's, you know, I see special ed is always being vulnerable for the reasons that you just think, so.
And, and to that point, um, before we allow the budget to go to the budget hearing, we might come back and say we have a screen need that's, we didn't anticipate, we need like change.
So you asked me earlier about two thousand dollars. That was in method six and it was a pressed, requested, um, every, every line where there was a reduction by a hundred percent and the amount was greater than two thousand dollars, what was happening there? I think you've answered all those.
Okay, so was it restricted to method six?
Restricted to six. It's only where there was, it got zeroed out.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, because I, I mean.
You can ignore that question.
It's valid to, um, provide explanations for the changes and the variances, but I just want to make sure it's a manageable theory.
The, the reserve for a special ed, it only be touched if the whole budget goes into default.
Yes.
That's something we should consider changing in the future, so that we get an unexpected student or something, we have a buffer against the budget.
That would be a one, our little.
A one or a change, I realize that.
You change the, uh, reserve, the reserve, yeah. Could be, that's a question. I've moved to Alston primary, I don't know where everybody else is, so.
Yeah, I guess I got maybe a format type of question because, well, it's six forty-four and we're only in Actworth. Is the plan to go through this whole thing page by page? Because we also have admin and teachers and principals that have to do the justification. And it's now almost seven o'clock at night and I certainly wouldn't want to keep them.
I think there will be fewer questions for all those schools. The plan was perhaps for an hour of the presentation and half hour of questions of the justification for, because it started Saturday anyway. So we're on schedule. Yeah, and we'll have to move through this. So. Yeah, it's. So with all that, are there questions regarding the Actworth?
I, no, I looked through Actworth. I looked through the whole thing. Looking at Alston primary that has a bunch of reductions in aides and associated benefits, but I'm gonna assume that the principal made those adjustments.
Well, I, I think that that plays into also the, the change that I was discussing, this would have been the default calculation.
Okay.
Is that I think that we had a lot of movement with paras that didn't get properly communicated.
We were carrying too many bots.
Yeah, that's right, yes.
Can I just add one? I have a question. Um, the substitute teacher line in Actworth went down. Is that, is there, are we doing something with teachers? With substitute teachers?
Um, I actually, I added substitute, um, I added substitute money in, um, for each building. We might need to move it around between functions, but well, we had, uh, substitute money this year, we didn't last year, or we don't this year. Are you, are you looking at, um, Actworth specifically?
I'm looking, well, I was looking, I just, I saw it in, in Actworth, at, at the one-ten, one-twenty line, it's the second line down from the, on page one. It says down by one thousand one thirteen.
Okay, I'll look at that. The one-twenty is their quarter.
Your, yeah, APS.
One-twenty, yeah, we, we have about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I think, in the budget for substitutes between facilities, drivers, teachers, aides. Uh, I tried to make sure that there was something in, in, like a reasonable amount in each. Uh, I tried to make sure that there was something in, in, like, a reasonable amount in each building and again, we might need to move it a little bit, um, by function.
Why does Alston primary not have any wages, which, I don't remember how this works, so forgive me. Page ten, it's twenty-six hundred, one thirteen. It says wages maintenance Alston primary. I guess it's been zero for a while and then all of a sudden last year they got nine hundred and ninety dollars appropriately and then it's back to zero. Do we normally apportion maintenance workers to all the schools? No, they pay for it through.
I don't know why that was there for the shift.
Wait, then, so that's probably just a snap through.
Is there a reason why, why wages guidance, or is all, our wages guidance for Actworth is after, is on page nine, page six, but the other Actworth is earlier. Sorry, now we're switching back and switching. Oh, now we're in guidance, I'm sorry, never mind.
Okay, are we in Actworth or Alston?
I'm in Alston. We're right, we're both back and forth between Alston and Actworth.
I'm now moving on.
I have one question. It's very small, but there is. I'm trying to move between the book, so I apologize. It appears that there is. Looks like the lead, there might be corporations for two lead teachers in Alston, in Actworth. And so I just want to make sure that that is. I will double check that, I know that in some locations we have, we have lead, we have lead teachers splitting, but I don't know why we have it there.
We, so there's only two teachers in Actworth and they split the lead teacher salary and the dues. Because they're, they're so small that they have to do so much together anyways.
That makes sense, but it doubled, so have we increased that?
Oh, not, shouldn't have, not doubled.
So it's point four, ten, one thirteen. I'm on page ten, oh, Actworth. If you're only told to have that, then we'll save that for another night. I'll double check that, thanks. Here's. That's Actworth, Ellen. Oh, it's eight years of Actworth, Ellen. Yes. That, that's what I thought. Yes. Okay, ACW. ACW, I need to fix that.
I'll figure it out. No, I have so many scores.
Okay, so everybody go to Actworth?
Yeah.
All right, then let's move on to Langdon. I don't have any more questions on Langdon.
So the question in Langdon, I think we're going to get answers when we get back to the E P S and the, and the, to your, to your point.
So I have a question for, and sorry, I was late, so you might have already said this, but the funding and the repair and the maintenance got zeroed out, did those get moved?
The nine ninety?
No, I just read this wrong, I'm sorry, there's just zero difference, sorry.
I didn't think we zeroed that out, I know we don't have funding expense for our, for the central office.
Yeah, no, it's, it's the same, there's just no difference from last year and I read it, all of these.
And there was no difference in the, um, probably, I don't believe.
Right.
On violence?
So I would like to, we skipped Alston. We skipped Alston.
The primary, no, I did it.
In, yeah, in violence.
Yeah, go back here.
What's your question on?
Maybe it's just my book, but I don't think in its APS, the report that we got tonight doesn't match the handout.
Oh, okay.
Go to the bottom of the report. It says it's only a one-point-five million dollar budget. Maybe it's just I'm missing a page or something.
Oh, that's one piece of it, because you have to, you have to, you have to add Alston primary and violence together.
Okay.
Yeah, I did that too, Steve.
Okay.
I had a hard task.
Because it's five and ten.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
So violence is where we start with, uh, these little sheets here. Those were all awarded. These where it says, uh, school specialty comp books, tape, laminating sheets, where those all work. So when I see these sheets, they were all working to your budgets?
Yeah. The sheet broken down so you know, instead of just being a random number and you have no idea what is.
Well, I just want to make sure they're all within your budget, that's all.
Yeah, that'll be it. Um, I certainly appreciate it, it's a lot of work, but I think it goes to show that our teachers do, they do a really small budget. And for some pretty basic things. I do have a question and I, I don't see it in the violence one, but I know in Charleston Middle and Wallfold, it lists workbooks for wit and wisdom and things like that. Were those not included in what we purchased? I thought we got all of that for years. None of the consumables?
Um, that's probably the whole needing conversation in and of itself. But, um, we are working through the extra materials we received that we didn't need. The total number of consumables that we received in excess than, uh, in excess for just one year. Um, we have a credit of approximately, um, a hundred and ten thousand dollars that will be put toward consumables for next year so that next year, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, excuse me, twenty-five, twenty-six will mostly, I think, um, be covered. We negotiated ourselves out of a multi-year agreement that bound us to certain fees that were beyond, um, the scope of a single budget year. And are in the process of finalizing all of that. So we should have the credit, um, consumables shipped out prior to December sixth for us to have here. And then we'll, we'll be able to sort, but at the time we needed to budget, we weren't confident how this was all going to play out. So, um, once we know how far the credit goes, we'll then be able to adjust those figures accordingly. Um, if there are any consumables that we still need, we'll be able, we'll budget for those, if we're covered, then we're covered.
Okay, so that's a little bit.
See a reduction.
So, like, yes, so as I was sitting here this evening, I was finalizing the spreadsheet for wit and wisdom so that they could see what we have for projected enrollments next year, what we have for materials on hand and what we need. Um, so that's all sort of live and real time right at the moment.
Thanks.
Yep.
So the consumables for, in my school, in, uh, ten, eleven hundred, six, ten, one hundred, see an increase of fifty-four, fifty-four hundred, one dollars. That has consumables in that line.
So that might go down.
It likely will go down.
Can I ask a question? And, um, I'm curious. It's probably, oh, never mind, just answer my question. The New Hampshire retirement system teacher for violence on page two, that's up a lot, fifteen percent, but it's probably because of that one sick re-buyout. I thought we had.
I, I asked, I asked Tammy to verify whether it was retired.
I thought we had negotiated where if that was going to cause us a large increase in cost that it was treated differently in our union agreement. Maybe it got the. The violence, I thought it was. I mean, and maybe it got negotiated out, double check the union agreement on that.
You have a member of teachers retiring in violence?
It's, we have so many, many, many years ago.
Yes, I know.
Okay. The, uh, the thought was it would be reasonable and cheaper to give, uh, the teaching staff sickly buyouts instead of substantial raises. Um, I think there's how many people left on that list, twenty-five? Really, that's it? Wow. That's it?
But we have.
Wow.
We, one of them is on that list, I didn't get it because I didn't retire.
Right, yeah. So, so to Sarah's point, a lot of people who were on that list never pulled the trigger because they decided to stay beyond, uh, right? But that's what those are, they're sick, they're sick days that have been purchased out and they're lump sum. But I thought we had negotiated way back to spread it over a certain period, two or three years, yeah, to make it smaller as a hit on us, but New Hampshire retirement system, so we'll double check that.
So we're expecting somebody to retire with the sick.
Yeah, they have to announce by November first.
This is a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, a hundred and twelve thousand.
That's not even the largest one we've ever paid out.
Yeah.
It's usually a guy because they don't have babies and they'll stay home with sick kids, but, and, yeah. And so the largest one we ever paid out in my lifetime was like over a hundred and fifty thousand.
Wow. Sounds like a good deal.
That was a great deal for them.
Sounds almost as good as mine.
Anyway, thank God it's gone.
Moving on to Charleston Middle?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're still violent?
I am, but keep going, I'll, I see someone.
So I did have a small question about the teacher sub-line, thirty-five thousand for, um, each of the four largest schools. Seems like a large number. Do we know what our actual cost is? So, I mean, like, I looked backwards and did an average and I didn't exceed those averages, but I was trying to keep it closer to the two fifty that we did for vacancy management for last year. Um, because looking back, it doesn't, we never get close to that amount in our actuals.
Really?
Well, in twenty-three in Charleston.
Yeah, but you want to know why? We had district substitutes on site and they cut them. We used to carry district substitutes at every, seven of them, right? Five or seven, and they all got cut two years ago. So you have no district subs anymore.
Okay.
I don't think, maybe the high school.
The high school.
High school. Kept there too, the other four, four or five were left out.
I mean, I'll double check it, yeah.
So.
Okay, if you feel it's a reasonable amount to have, might be there, are we good with it?
Might be a place, or you just go over and let it eat into whatever, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, reestablish the average.
Yeah. That's, that's a lot. In CMS and CPS.
Yeah.
We go over that every year.
So, I mean, like, we haven't been able to find them since.
Right, exactly, that's the other part, right? There's no bodies to hire.
Yeah. But if they're more available, we would be spending.
Can we look at that figure?
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to the principles and maybe knock that down a little.
Yeah, I am, but I will.
Lori?
Lori, you want to answer that?
I don't know how to answer it, but just to provide some more context, it, um, so last year we had two one-half days covered by a substitute. This year to date, we've had zero time covered by a substitute. So all of the expenses at my building are basically five dollars at a time, which is the differential we pay a pair to cover. So, um, yes, we did eliminate the district subs, we don't get substitutes, we haven't, and this is my third year here. So in the, you know, two and a third years I've been here, we haven't really had substitutes and it's just that five, five bucks in a period, average six periods a day, thirty dollars a day roughly is what we end up actually paying out for someone we have a, a teacher out for the full day. So it, it, it should be lower than three years ago and before.
So let's look at that, can we at least?
Yep.
And we're not budgeting anything for furnitures or fixtures or computer or comm equipment?
If it's.
Southstone primary?
If it's under five thousand, it's.
Oh, sorry, you moved it to.
Then?
The other factor with the substitute piece is in the C V A for teachers, they get thirty-five dollars to cover a period. So if you're using teachers to cover for other teachers, that's significantly more than the eighty dollars a day that the subs we normally need paid. So there's a pretty large discrepancy between the thirty that you use for, to help a pair of cover versus teachers covering, it could be hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, you would, the high school would use teacher coverage.
So I think that the, you don't have a crystal ball, you do the best you can. So if those of you feel comfortable adjusting that, I think for your schools, do so. Those of you, have a conversation with Lori and put in what you think is what you think you're going to spend, and if you go over, you go over, you have a crystal ball, you don't know. I mean, it could be a pandemic tomorrow, we don't know.
Our, our substitute rates aren't competitive. It's probably worth having a discussion on as well if we're spending thirty-five dollars.
They're not, no, competitive, the minute we move them here, the people next to you are going to move them, it's like a competitive little race with substitute, it, it is. It is a dog, like, yeah.
I think that another factor is that our bottom of the tier is paraprofessional. You can't pay a substitute more than they're making per day.
Correct.
So that's why that, that's why we're at eighty dollars. Yeah. Lower than you, beginning of, beginning of the salary scale, pairs are not making them.
That's a good point. Well, we should put substitute around the rest. Internal enemies.
I don't have any other questions for Charleston Middle, anybody else? I don't have any other ones. Okay. Any question to have with that staff, but that's going to take care of. Any questions on North Wallfold?
Please, you slid me right along.
Yeah, at time.
I don't have any questions for, I need another question.
Right. If I have any else. Seven long.
That we do with the high school?
What is this with the high school?
Your high school.
That's North Wallfold, you're opposite. I think it's all of Wallfold, actually. Not by design.
That's so we can't read it, right? I lost the high school.
Lost it?
Yeah, I don't know where.
Uh, ten, twenty.
Yeah.
I'm cool next.
High school?
Yeah.
Did we ever figure out if hockey was a club sport or an extension sport? And isn't in the budget?
We have not had the second discussion that we intended to have yet.
Okay.
So it's not going into budget.
So it's not, it's still a club portion?
It's still whatever it is and it's going on, so whatever discussion we have will be, I'm assuming will be for next year. Unfortunately.
Club sport, other club sport.
What's that?
The co-op sport means that we, sorry, we join with other districts and they play at the varsity level, so it's not club, it's a co-op. And the way that I understand it from our athletic record is we split the cost basically three ways, or we pay a portion of, uh, for each player that we have.
Right, we were going to change things around. Well, we were gonna, we were thinking about doing stuff different, but we're. Well, we were gonna, we were thinking about doing stuff different, but we're a little late and seeing how that has already started. My understanding, right? They're already playing hockey?
At least they started today.
Yeah, so.
But the contract was signed, we started talking about it. What we would have been doing would be next year anyway.
So who's paying for it then? Isn't that you? Who's paying for it now? Yeah, it's okay?
Paying, paying.
No, it is. Okay. And it's our only sport that's paid for it? Yep.
Yes, yes. It's getting a hundred dollars.
Well, not, well, not necessarily because the athletic director, I believe, does fundraising.
Yeah.
And sometimes there's fundraising in keen, correct?
Yeah.
That also might offshoot some of the parent costs. I think I got that right.
You didn't. So keen is the, 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 the guys playing with the dad, not you.
I mean, they're still paying to play, but.
They've, they're. The, the, the girls are paying two hundred bucks. The families of the girls are paying about two hundred dollars. And the family of the boys are paying about eleven hundred dollars.
But if you mean the girls are paying that because there's fundraising that's going on.
There's a booster clubbing team that really contributes a lot of money to that and they're on the keen team. So they're getting, taking advantage of that. Manadoc doesn't have that booster clubbing.
That's correct.
So we need to bring that back around the next meeting.
Yeah.
Pointing back to the budget. Um, there's, I, I just want to know, there's asterisks and I, I just, I'm wondering what the asterisks are.
The, what page on?
On page, well, I'm, they, they, they start on page four. And they continue on on page five. There's like single ones and double ones. Are you in the high school? In high school. Yeah. So.
Yeah, so, um, I, I can't speak to that. That's in the chart of accounts from, I don't know, really.
Oh, okay.
But so it, it doesn't seem to be associated with four hundred. It's like four oh four, four oh five, four oh six. So I, I don't.
So those, so I looked at that too. Is that because they tried to break it out into, uh.
Subject matter?
Yeah, by subject matter. That's a pain. I'm being nice when I say that.
So, so with that, then there's instructional supplies for the high school in general. And then it's broken down into English, social studies, math, et cetera. That's in addition to the, to the supplies for the fall high school? Or is she, is she?
Yeah, there's, there's supplies for opposite principal and then each department.
Then each department.
Yeah, okay.
So where it says instructional supplies, that's instructional supplies in general is for.
Yeah, so the principal.
Okay.
This is actually their form of the, like, general education function.
Oh.
Or maybe we can, do we have justification sheets for all their tasks?
So those types of supplies under the.
She has, she has.
Says what?
Detailed notes in the budget.
In the budget.
And my intent was originally to print it.
I know, but it's huge.
Maybe like five hundred pages.
And you send it in a, in a PDF?
Um, so for example, supplies in science.
Um, so if she put the notes in the actual budget module, maybe you can pull that for the budget committee. Pull that down as a PDF and just ship it out to both, both boards, the committee and the board. That way, anybody.
This is high school, yeah. Because the rest are hard.
Yeah, just there's wonky that all the other school, well, from Villas to Charleston to Wolf. All had those little spreadsheets and then the high school doesn't. So if we can see those, that would be beneficial.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
So we are good. Waiting on that report.
So we'll get a report for the high school because they use the module, puts the notes into the module. Very nice. And so Lori's going to print that off as a PDF and send it to us. In the backup. But they, but the high school did do the same data as the other schools did when justifying their supplies. It's just an.
Yes, so, so each school, um, it, it, it's going through different names. Each school is at a, um, a different level of, you know, system and stuff, right?
So it'll print right below the line?
I, I think I'll do that for, um. Superintendent, my hands at least to.
Yep. If they're using them, yeah, that's awesome.
Is it possible to get a listing of all these offerings at the high school?
Classes?
Classes and programs?
Yes.
Is that easy to generate?
That's absolutely. We have it, uh. Going on the December meeting, you have to, it has to be.
Oh, yeah. So our next meeting. We, the board asked for some review of that. And then we asked them to bring it back to the board before we approve it. So you guys won't get it until we approve it and until they print it.
All right.
Yeah, or.
It's going to take to get the listing.
They could take it or whatever.
Is it really the day after?
Yeah.
Well, we'll get it as soon as.
Yeah. You know, the rumbling always is, is lack of problems at the high school. That's what I keep hearing on the street. So like, be able to say that big confidence is what's often.
Well, we have a class size requirement. So Lori, can you just look and, and see about that? Because it looks to me as if, I, I just want an explanation in terms of like, it says instructional textbooks, high school. And then it says English, social studies, math, world language and art and drama. And, but then instructional text. So I'm just confused as to.
Is that a six forty account? Right, because I can give you some examples.
That's six forty and also six ten.
Yeah.
Does the same thing?
The six forty, so instructional textbooks for high school, special projects, book shortages due to class changes, staffing changes and retention of books.
Okay.
Uh, for English, both fiction and nonfiction to update materials for relevance. Uh, interest in reading level based on Amazon pricing and availability. I don't have any notes for geometry.
I understand it for each of the individual areas. I just was confused as to the, the, I mean, the general thing and then individual. So.
A roll-up. So I'm going to assume the roll-up on the general is a bit in case there's emergencies or loss or it's principal's discretion.
Yes, those lines are unexpected type of needs, yes, so, special project in order to.
So it's constantly principal's discretion.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right.
All righty, ready to move on to the justification?
Yeah.
Yes. Nobody got their question answered?
Now.
All right. So the. Uh, so I gave a handout of the justification.
Just a, yeah, just so you didn't have to, like, take your.
May I please?
Well, it has to do with this. So there's these, but there's. There's others in here, uh, the ones that didn't make this packet part of one point two, and this is now one point.
Talk about justification. So none of this is in any budget at this stage. Okay, this is a request.
That's how I'm saying. You have.
I, I did put justifications in the binders. There's one.
So you have two percent to office, but in this presentation, there's only one.
This is the only, these are the only ones that we are going to request from you to permission.
One point three.
Yes. So I, what I did is I, I printed it out so you had them readily available and didn't have to go through looking through your books. So Kyle, if you can put this up on the screen to share.
Oh, oh, oh.
So this is part of our, it was not. So part of our new approach was, I mean, like, we tried to, to build a budget based on what we have in place already. No surprise, it's full transparency. And then these are our requests. So if we have new positions, new programming, new equipment, anything like that. Um, we wanted to come and ask the, the board first, you know, can we move it forward? And then the budget committee can discuss it as well. These have all been presented embedded within the advent team. So there are, um, in the binders, you have more justifications. We're not bringing all of them to you. We're only asking for these. Um, so we, we did read some of them out. We, you know, don't anticipate that we're going to get a hard one to be asked. Um, but we would like the discussion, like you to know why we think it's important to add and consider adding it to the budget.
But isn't our role this evening for the board to get justification and to vote on it? And if the budget committee is just now listening? Is that my understanding? That's what I thought we discussed last week, was the budget committee is now just listening. And this is now just a board presentation to where the board decides about moving forward.
If I may. I have a contrary understanding. In my discussion with our superintendent, this is not only a listening session for the budget committee. We will also be available to ask questions of the administrators presenting.
In addition to that, they, what the board decides to move on, if we vote no, it ends with us. If we vote yes, then the budget committee takes it up and decides they want it to move forward. And they're actually separating into a separate meeting after this to do what they will with it.
But that's fine. I, I just know that what, what we had discussed on Monday, so if things had changed, it would have been nice to have gotten clarification.
So it has to be approved for the school board and then it gets approved by the, like, the lawyer. So.
We, we will not vote with, with you. So the, the voting as, as we go through. And, and my understanding is that you will vote on each article as they come forward. We will not have a yay or nay at that time.
All right. But you can ask questions, just, just like if, if, that you are a member of the public.
Correct. But not, not if we were a member of the public. No, I just, I don't think we would entertain questions from the public. Were there any here tonight?
Oh, there are just no members in the public. They want to ask a question. Just a workshop.
I think you got a member of the public.
He's an employee.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is Dan. He's our mechanic.
Yeah.
Oh, hi. Nice to meet you, Dan.
Um, all right. So moving forward, we do not have Xandra with us this evening. Will you, you present for her? Uh, yes. Um, so, um, as you know, we cut, um, a student service coordinator, uh, position for this school year. Um, and Xandra was requesting that that be reinstated because of the intensity of our, our special education needs across the district. While our, um, enrollment might be dropping, our special education enrollment is king pleasing. Um, we have, um, community members, you know, outside community members that are coming to our programs as well. Um, and we have to be the LEA for all of these meetings. Um, so she's saying that, that, that there is at least one meeting per student per school year, which is three hundred and four meetings. But in reality, one third of the students with IUP has had at least two or three meetings per school year, which is an additional approximately a hundred and fifty meeting. At a total of four hundred and fifty-four meetings per school year, with each meeting lasting approximately forty-five to sixty minutes. And the student service coordinators mentor and support our, uh, special education teachers. We have a lot of, uh, new special education teachers, um, across the district. We've had, um, uh, I think that you recall that we, we, um, the board approved an incentive to transfer and, and move into special ed. But we did have some people that took advantage of that. Uh, we had some people I think that transferred that, that did have a double license, but some of them were new. Um. And let's see. They also deal with all of the complex, um, paperwork to ensure that we have compliance. Um, and she's, um, her, her, uh. I was surprised that if it's not improved, approved, the impact would be that it would, um, significantly impact the new teachers and they'll not receive the guidance and support that they require to do the job well. And the district as a whole will be at a greater risk of engaging in procedural errors or violations of state and federal guidelines. Um, and then we're also concerned about staff right now. So.
Quick question. This is method six?
Yes.
I'm trying to read it and I'm sorry. I'm doing two things at once. Um. Do we know the total number of caseloads? Was it noted in here?
Um, so currently we have two hundred and ninety-two students. I know about special ed needs, but it doesn't, it doesn't. I mean, like, we, we, we have one position that's open right now, but we haven't been able to fill. And part of it's due because of the caseloads.
So is there, so how many do we currently have on staff? One and Xandra?
One, yep, and, um, Xandra's not filling in.
So we're going to try to add one and hire two when we can't fill.
Part of the reason we haven't been able to fill the one is that when they find out about the caseload, um, they say away.
How many people have turned us down?
I don't, I don't think we get to a point where we can make an offer. We, they turn us down in the context.
So how many have you interviewed for the job?
I don't have that.
I'd like that information.
So we were able to.
Xandra used a lot of them on her own.
Does she?
They never.
Okay. So if we were able to change the listing from a hundred and fifty is your caseload to a hundred is your caseload, that might draw in more people if that's the expectation. That's my understanding.
Uh, like, Ocean, Lumsdale, Unity, and I meant, what percentage of this person will, like, get tuitioned? Part of their tuition, free to birth, you know, paying, they're going to pay something for this position.
That we'd only charge the additional, um, tuition if we're providing direct services to the student on top of their.
But this would be direct services to the students.
Uh, no, direct services to the student would be speech, OT, that type of thing. I don't think that, uh, coordinator, that's, I don't think that that would qualify. I have Jamie, am I wrong?
I defer this to, but, um.
Yeah.
I, so if it's considered a normal part of your special education budget that you provide to all students within the school, right, that might need something? If it's not over and above, um, like a specialized service, like Lori mentioned, OT, speech, or anything like that, where they need a certain amount of minutes each week or anything like that. The other district doesn't get charged back. It's included in the base cost of the tuition.
That's what I'm asking. How much of that?
So the base cost of the tuition would go up for each student because you're adding more money to the budget itself.
That's why I'm asking is how much of that, six thousand will get back to us?
How many, I'm sorry, give me one second. How many kids approximately are there in the high school?
Four eighty-six, yeah.
Four eighty-six? So you take that position divided by four eighty-six and potentially that much.
Yeah, the same, because there's twelve students that are out of district.
So, so that's how that cost, I'm assuming, would be determined if you follow that. Because you take the total cost, you carve out transportation, you carve out activity. You carve out, you know, certain things that you would have anyway, because that's how you're supposed to do it. Then you divide, thank you so much. Then you divide that by the amount of kids and that's how you set your tuition rate. So if you're adding more money in the baseline of the budget, right, that's not specialized. Then they would pay a portion of it in line with however many kids are here. So.
So everybody on this board has sat here when Xandra has presented, and Xandra doesn't come before the board, kind of with these nilly-willy numbers. And we've always approved her. And I make a motion that we approve it now. We understand that special ed is a huge issue, especially if you're looking at a caseload like they are. And we literally have two people, one being Xandra, which is a huge issue. If I came and applied for this district as a case manager, and Xandra looked at me and said, my caseload would be 150 people, I would say, no, thank you, have a good day. So I understand the bottom line number looks very big. However, if we can at least get even one other person through the door, we would be of benefit. So I make a motion to approve this one based off of the fact that Xandra and her team of one need help. And I understand that there, it's very hard to hire right now. But I also think that if she didn't think she could hire, she wouldn't have put this in at some point.
I'll second that, but I have a question. So I'll get it open on the table here.
What's a, what's a normal caseload these days? Well, this is not a caseload for a case manager, a normal caseload for a case man, for a special ed, for a special ed teacher case manager? It's two different things. One more, it's a little, because if a normal caseload for a special ed teacher as a caseload would be about between anywhere from 20 to 30 kids. So for this position. But this position, if you're looking at, if you're looking at having, basically these are assistants to the special ed director.
Correct, okay, yeah. It used to be Karen and
Right, can't remember names, but yeah.
So. We have two, and we have Donna.
And we had Donna.
50 to 80.
Oh, is that them?
I think.
And so there is. Yeah.
80 is pushing.
When I was the special ed director in Springfield, I did not have anyone to help me. I had my administrative assistant, but I read all the IUPs before they were approved. I had a caseload of that team of like 200, 280 kids in Springfield.
So it depends on how.
It depends on how it's, it depends on how it's, but that was during the time when Walnut was set up differently. It depends on how it's set up. It, it, it is a nice way of doing it, because it really lets you look closely at your, I spent a lot of time reading IUPs that I could have been doing something else. And making special ed teachers mad because they.
Well, making changes on the kids.
But, and having LEAs that are, what other districts do if they don't have this kind of a position is they have principals then having to work as the LEAs at meetings. And they are not necessarily completely versed in all of the special ed laws. And it also takes them then again, another thing that they have to do that takes away from being able to be with, in the school with their kids. So I do support the idea of having the, of having the student service coordinators. That does make sense to me.
I'd like clarification on what the industry normalization of caseload is. But according to artificial intelligence that everybody uses today, it's 100 to 200 students is considered standard in the industry.
For a teacher or for a coordinator?
For student service coordinator.
Okay, so 100, you and me too.
100 to 200.
I think that's what she said. These student service coordinators are necessary to effectively manage the intensity and range of special ed needs across the district.
So how does the school board vote? All in favor?
I.
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 Doesn't matter how we vote.
Yeah.
I'll support it with an I. But if these case numbers start to drop back down, I think it needs to be looked at again. I mean, the 300 with severe needs, definitely, okay? So I guess I would have liked to have a little bit more information before I'm asked to vote on it. But I'm going to give it an affirmative because I think it's important. And then we'll probably have another conversation again at the budget committee.
Yeah, and I just, I know that we're done with discussion, but one thing.
Kevin hasn't voted.
I'm voting no. Mostly not because of this position, but because I worry about, we had a humongous, a large increase in Langdon last year. I don't want that same increase this year. So I'm voting probably no on almost everything that's going to be contractual.
Thank you for agreeing. So it passes with a five to one. And we can make sure it goes on a future agenda when we're looking at budget for next year, to make sure that the caseload is the same, the position is still necessary. And that's really going to be important for the budget committee to look at as well. All right.
I also trust that if Xandra thought that she was overstaffed, she'd be the first person to come in here and make sure she got that person onto budget. So I just want to, I think if things were to settle down in our world, I think Xandra has earned the trust of this board to be able to say, yeah, I mean, we can look at it again next year, of course.
And I don't think it would make her happier when you say we had.
Yeah, I think she would love that, actually.
Yeah, and one of the jobs of, a lot of times of this position is to coordinate the out of district placements. And I know that one of the things that Xandra's trying to do is to bring down those out of district placements. We can bring down those, you know, wants to get working to end their job. But, you know, if we can bring down those out of district placements, then we may not need to have that.
Excellent. All right, are we good to move on to the next justification?
Good evening. I'm Chris Young, Principal of Charleston Primary School. I am looking for an additional five hours to my library assistant. Currently, my library assistant is at 25. I'm looking to increase her to 30 hours per week. This would provide a lot of flexibility when it comes to scheduling. I am very grateful that my current person is allowing me to use her within five days. However, moving forward, that may not be the case, which means that I would be limited in how I would be able to schedule our required preps based on the union contract. There are some additional pieces that go with this. Library assistants around the district are all at 32.5. We have one in Alstead, one in Walpole, and one at CMS. I am looking at increasing mine to 30 hours. When you look at the number, it is only a five hour increase. However, when you look at the number, it is pretty substantial. And the reason behind that is because it brings her into benefits, moving to 30. And just based on the position and the flexibility that it brings, that's why I'm bringing it forward to you. Are there any questions?
Are you anticipating that the media special position will remain unfilled?
The media, the, we currently have a media specialist K12. We used to have one K8, and then one at the high school. We only have one this year that is remaining, I won't say unfilled, that was taken out of the budget last year. So there are some additional responsibilities when it comes to the library assistants that are still being worked out this year. But she is also one that is not at full capacity. 30 hours a week is what I consider standard for student support. 8:30 to 3 o'clock.
So the 16,000 that's here, is that the benefits?
Correct.
That's all?
That's all then, correct. That's why it's substantially higher than just an hourly rate.
There is discussion of having school librarians be, basically this is a school, I think the media specialist would be considered the school librarian. And having that be a certified position, they're looking at certification for those in the state. The library assistant does not need to be certified.
Correct.
But she is, she is trained in the.
Yes. I have been fortunate enough to have her for seven years, and she is wonderful.
We'll make a motion, we add the five hours per week to CPS library assistant.
Second. Lastly, I assume it would be a direct expense just to Charles County.
Correct.
Can you look at your substitute teacher line?
Yes, I will look at that.
Cut it by 16, yeah. Does the motion?
We call an emote?
Well, I just wanted to say a motion of rep to add five hours in those who benefit.
Well, yeah, that's just contractual anyway. We just have to do just five hours per week for the position. Whatever's associated will come, it just letting us know what it looks like.
Workshop dates and, oh, the 191, that's the same as.
That is the standard contract for all library assistants.
Yeah, because they do five days before, five days after.
Okay. All in favor? All right.
I hope you can get your voice listed.
Which name, 411?
She's a permanent.
All right, thank you. Reluctantly. Understandably.
Look at you, you're scared.
Look at your chair.
Read some changes that have been different to the type and matrix. Did I get that out? So we had some additional positions that we have added to the matrix, or we would like to add to the matrix. A number of those are the mentors for site-based licensed plans. So we had several mentors that we would like to add for that. We wanted to add a free and reduced coordinator, any vento coordinator. We didn't have an established stipend for that, because last year. So we were recommending that that be added. We were recommending, I think they sort of mentioned, that's area 504. Yeah, we were recommending 504, coordinating for the high school. We already have one for district wide, I think we were talking about one, having them for each area. We had coaches that were moving from one column to another based on number of games and such. So we do realize that this is a big ask, the 17,000.
Is there a reason why we didn't break it down?
I had intended to give you the report.
When you get it to us now, I'm not going to approve it. Yeah, I can't do anything without seeing it.
I know, I granted it out.
I want to cite this license plan.
So that's, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Sure, so we have a hard time hiring folks. And the folks we hire, many of them are on alternative pathways to certification. It used to be called all four or all five. Now everything is called a site-based licensing plan. And it's a three-year process that gets completed by folks who come in with a degree, the prerequisite courses or skills. And then during those first three years, they work on an interim license, complete the remaining competencies necessary to be fully certified in the content area we are employing them. And then they submit that final piece to the state. So they go on something called a site-based licensing plan. Some plans are as simple as, okay, they really have the middle requirements. We just need to go through this year, sign off on the end, and we're good to go. Others are multiple college courses or professional development activities, and much more robust and intensive. In order to be on a plan, it has to be signed off on by somebody who currently holds that license. And the increase in the number of individuals we have on site-based licensing plan or alternative pathways to certification, there's a management piece to that that has to happen, that we don't, as the principals of these folks or major partner, nobody individually has the bandwidth to be able to take on multiple candidates. So if their mentor, who is the person who holds the certification they are seeking, can mentor them, be the person responsible for checking to ensure that they are sticking with their plan, they're meeting their benchmarks or deadlines along the way, that their evidence that they are providing for completion of the competencies is sufficient, then they can, we have a greater likelihood that our candidates who we enter in on a plan will be successful on that plan and actually achieve full certification because there's somebody dedicated to monitoring that that happens. I know in my building alone, I think I'm pushing double digits of folks on alternative plans. It's a lot, it's a lot of them. Yeah, and more, more coming. So I don't, I think we put the stipend on the lowest end of that matrix. And the amount of work varies, but there's also, I thought, thought somebody provided for the board the, kind of the job description and the responsibility of that. It doesn't exist, it's a great rate.
So I think the program is very, are they contractually obligated to stay with the district?
That was my question.
We haven't put anything in place like that yet. And to be quite frank, it's, they have the upper hand in all of this, right? The candidate has the upper hand in all of this. If they were to leave within that window and not complete their plan, they essentially have to start over, brand new in a new district. So there's some degree potentially of motivation on the part of the candidate to at least work through the period of time of that plan and get to completion. But it is a candidate's market, not an employer's market right now. And so that's the uphill battle that we are working with.
I would like to, just so that, so that we can continue discussion, I would like to make a, to, what do I know? Make a motion. I want to make a motion to approve the budget request for the 17, for the stipend. Is this a stipend, for the stipends for these position, for these positions, which is more than just the site-based licensing plan person? For the new positions.
Do I have a second?
This is so that we can just continue discussion, Dr.
Not saying I'm voting for it. You want to change the motion?
I just think there's so many questions that are going to arrive from this that it is maybe not beneficial to even discuss any further with this. Because I can see how many Jamie has. I know I have loads of them, like why they're all plumped together. They're not, it's not just one position, they're all plumped together, right? We have all, is it 30 positions, is it 26, is it? I'm trying to get it printed, I mean, I'm trying to figure out. Yeah, but I think even if it's printed, there's not enough. I'm not going to be able to make a decision on that tonight, not for 22,000, 23,000.
Not for twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, and it is speaking in terms of what I've seen in other districts, these. Like McKinney Vento is often included in. Grant, grants management, or it's included in the, the community liaison position. It's included in, it's included in this special education, which would be, which changes the name to student services as opposed to just special education. Same with five oh four, often it's managed in terms of managed. Out of the student services department as owes to a separate spot. So I, I have some, I, I do have some concerns.
There sounds like.
We'll be tabling this one.
Do you wanna call it a table or do you wanna?
Rather table it to the way it's more information.
I don't wanna say no and then, like, I wanna be able, for anybody who wants to come back and give us the digital info.
So I, I think we were trying to be proactive, but. But because it usually comes like after budget season, which is too late.
Right, you got a bunch of other adjustments to look at, so.
If the budget committee decided to vote this down, would not come back to us because they voted down, correct?
They wouldn't go down until we did.
We can vote yes and they can just cut it by five hundred thousand, not give you any just. The budget committee has control over the bottom line, you can add whatever you want, okay?
And we have to cut it out, so we can.
Whatever, right, that's how it works.
All right. The next thing I heard is athletic trainer.
No, I have a, I have Bill. Replace one van for replacement cycle forty-five dollars.
Yeah, and there's an equipment list in here.
I don't have the.
Everybody have eight vehicles in my department. And I feel we should be replacing one a year, the one I wanna replace, this one has a hundred and sixty-six thousand miles on it. It is in very rough shape and it's time to be changed. Now we have. Four vans, three vans and two pickup trucks. And then a dump truck, a loader tractor, and then a little tiny, one of those old Japanese mini trucks. And I just feel we should replace a van every year or a pickup truck, and then once. The dump truck, we waited thirteen years to replace and the loader tractor was. Every place, every time we get a work order, we have to drive somewhere. To a school and, we just need, we just need good vehicles to make it there. We had one breakdown and it was out for a week. And that person had to be, use his own vehicle and or team up with somebody else, drive around, so it just. Doesn't help. Efficiency of the department without increasing vehicles.
How many, how many bodies are in the department?
Uh, six.
So.
We have a open painted position.
So there should be seven.
Counting many.
Right, but so. And you drive one of the trucks, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks like there's a, what's with the twelve, two thousand twelve van, are we still using that?
That was the painted van.
Oh, so that one's been sitting?
How long has the painter's position been open?
Uh, she resigned in, has, this year.
This year, okay.
June thirtieth, I think, twenty.
Yeah, not long ago.
I'll make a motion to get the discussion going.
So we're really looking at two, if we hire a painter.
Well, we would have to, we would just get another one next year. I would love to, but, you know, I don't wanna get greedy.
The, the tragic accident on Route Twelve with the bus, how is that impacting you today?
It's not him, that's. Maintenance, this is maintenance. And what do we do with the mini truck?
Uh, we, we mostly use that in the summertime, well, spring and fall, lining the other fields. Because we could put all our lining equipment in that and drive it to Charles Town and Walpole, Alstead. And we get like fifty to sixty miles a gallon instead of seven.
You know, I know we've had this conversation multiple times in the past. I know certain people hate it and certain people love it, but we. We discussed going on a lease agreement where it's a turnover every so many years, so that payment. Is just baked into the budget and it stays static. And so have we, I know, because you probably have done this, I don't know how many times in twenty years, but. Have we, yeah, twenty-five, getting old, Bill. Have we looked at that, I mean, have we looked at what? You know, because these vans, I know, believe me, they cost what, what's the, what's the public bid on them right now, thirty-six?
Uh, they're, they're right around forty-two.
Really?
Yeah.
My god.
And then you, then you gotta have a rack system.
Yeah.
Down there about four.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and their life, and I mean their life, if you treat. I don't know what happened with the Chevy, but it's in poor when it's seven years old, but that's okay.
That's high mileage.
No, it's highest mileage. You know, because I, I think if we looked at this on a rotation with some type of lease purchasing available. That you, you know, you change them out every, I don't know, pick a, pick an age, right? Yeah, five or seven years, and we just get on that rotation, doesn't the town do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the other thing that I would suggest the board look at is establishing a capital reserve. For equipment like this, so that in five years, when the truck comes due, you have a bulk of money already put aside.
I do not, I'm much prefer doing a lease where you just got it consistent across the board in the budget.
You could also reserve for the lease.
So is there any thought? To get you that new van, but transfer that van down to this mechanic. Vehicle to service bus breakdowns.
Oh, the old one?
Yeah, it's the cargo, the Chevy cargo van that you wanna get rid of.
Yep.
Can, can the mechanic use that? As the vehicle to drive around to fix the buses if they're broken down?
I do have to ask that.
Why? Why?
It's not what we're looking for, we're looking for a, a work truck that would have a lift gate on it, in case you have to lift tires up. You go try and lift one of those rear tires up on that, on that bus.
Dan, go ahead.
One of the issues that Bill has with his fleet is not only the year, but the make and model. He has Chevy Expresses and they're mid to late two thousands. He just witnessed one, one of his other ones I was down for a week he was telling me about. It's a EPS module system and it goes anywhere from a thousand to twenty-three hundred dollars. And basically what you have to do is you have to go to a dealership, have this thing reprogrammed from the factory themselves, we don't have software, it's too expensive for the school. So that's what he's running into with his fleet, he's already seen it once and it will happen with the rest of his fleet. That's another reason why I will not drive one of those vans, because not only, it doesn't, it doesn't serve me as far as functionality. But the electrical problems down the road are only gonna bite us. So that's one reason why I don't, definitely need more vehicles anywhere.
Does that, don't go away, Dan, you're a wealth of information. Does that only happen in those type of Chevy vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the.
It's the same, we, we would actually have the same problem with our Chevy school buses, where we, uh, we rotate them so often.
Yeah.
By the time we hit that mileage, they're already down.
Yeah.
So it'd serve us well to do.
Well, it's, it's rotating them, that's why this one's got so many miles on it, they don't, well, but part of the problem with the whole rotation thing, as Bill will probably tell you, is that. When you get a driver in one of them and they fall in love with it and they think it's theirs, it's hard to rotate them out of it to a different.
Just reminding that it doesn't say their name on it.
And unfortunately, with the municipal discount, that the state, when the state puts them all off the bid.
Yeah.
Chevy three-quarter ton cargo vans is the one that always wins the bid.
Sure, yeah, because it's the cheapest available, they're not always the best price though, going through the development thing. It really is.
Any other discussion on the motion?
No, I think I would like to table this one too, not to be a pain in everybody's butt tonight, but. Until we could maybe reach out and get what would it look like to do two. Boards, I'm gonna assume are better product or whatever you all come up with that isn't, and maybe use the expertise of your mechanic that you have on the site. And see what that looks like over, you know, it doesn't have to be seven years, but maybe five. And ask them, or four, and ask them for a, for a. A no penalty prepayment clause, as much surplus as we keep generating. Yeah, yeah, and while you're at it.
Can we do the same with the mechanic vehicle?
Yeah, but look at that as a, go to your Ford garages, go to Claremont, go to, you know, whatever.
Your problem with the lease will be the size of the vehicle.
Not always, give it a shot, we're still gonna look into it. You'd be surprised what some of them who work for school districts are willing to, to bring in, Claremont Ford's pretty big.
Yeah.
And they're pretty generous.
Yeah, they're very generous.
Unfortunately, they won't lease anything above a one fifty.
I think you would actually be very surprised, you can contact the highway superintendent down in Charles Town, he gets one fifties all the time through lease through there.
Oh, that was about two weeks ago I inquired about it.
You might wanna have Art or Bill maybe help you make those phone calls. And Art, you can contact Keith. And, and maybe you can get whoever he talks to, but I think you can get.
I think it's worth looking into, to spread the pain out. Over, you know, and I know there's people, it's in the back of my head, Mr. Verone's probably going, don't wait that one, it's under eighty. I, I know, I can hear him, okay? Uh, yeah, we both can, we listened to him for years, but, um, but I think it's worthwhile looking at so that it, we don't keep going like this, right? I mean, wherever we can smooth it out.
I mean, we can, we can roll, roll this one over into our, into our bus lease, I mean, we have a bus lease where we have half our fleet, then we swap.
So right on the same schedule, I think it's worth looking at. Yeah, so good, then we will table for this as well as the work truck, so thank you for being here.
I, can we have a little, so you talked about getting a lift, but the tire. Just, if this was to come before the board again, can you just have a detail write up of, all right, you wanna lift, we want this, we want this. You know, just the little extras that you're gonna add.
Another thing I would like to add is, is so far this year, Dan has put one thousand two hundred fifty-one miles on his own vehicle. Servicing our buses outside on, on the road. And we have seen, he just, just turned a year with us. And in that year's time, we have yet to have a record call, where we used to average three to four a year.
Sure.
At eight hundred, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Um, he is also certified, so that now we do all of our warranty work inside the house. We do not have to rig our warranty work anywhere else. He gets the parts for free, he repairs it in the garage. We don't have to wait for somebody else to say, well, we can't get your bus in for three, three or four days or a week, so the bus is down. He's now able to do it right inside and it's paid for. Um, we have a detailed list of the savings that we have done with the year, and I think Laurie is gonna include that in your packet. Um, so you can see the, the savings that we have set up with Dan and different programs. Interstate battery, we now have an interstate battery program, where we have interstate batteries in our shop that we do not pay for. Until we take one off the shop, put it into a vehicle, so there is no waiting to get a battery here, if you got a dead battery, that bus is up and running again.
So follow up on that, please, because justification on, on this sheet only talks about those record calls. Just eight hundred dollars, get four of those a year, that's twenty-four hundred dollars you're saving. To, to pay for a forty thousand dollar truck, that means a truck has to be around for sixteen years, just to pay for that, not the insurance and everything else, so. When you redo your justification, can you talk about how that truck would be used additionally throughout the year, not just for record calls, so you have some. So it justifies that cost?
True, yeah, he, I mean, he also uses it to go to weird parks.
Yeah, that's like, I get, I get it, I just make sure that you include that in here, because it will help your case, right now, it doesn't make any financial sense whatsoever. That it, it pays itself for itself in sixteen years and that makes no financial sense, so if you can make some better case for it, I'd appreciate it.
What's on that for the first meeting in December? So I was gonna ask, everything that's been tabled, is it for the first meeting in December, I think in order to get it in, you'll have to do so. All right. Any other questions concerning tableting any of these things? None, perfect, Sarah.
First one we have is athletic trainer, I guess that's what's next in my list. Good evening, everyone, how are you? Okay, athletic trainer, asking for ninety-six thousand eighty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, for an athletic trainer, a full-time athletic trainer. Luckily, our process right now is, uh, we contract out to people and maybe we get them. And if we don't get them, we have to rely on EMS. The sports that we have fallen out are dangerous, we have a lot of injuries, a lot of concussions. Um, it's important that we have in-house healthcare for these athletes. Number one, my, number one job is student health and safety, student safety, and this is one of the things that. I'm, I need to be passionate about, a certified athletic trainer is immediate professional care. And it minimizes the risk of long-term injury to our students. Also, it helps them like rehabilitate quicker and prevent, do preventative things, so. They're learning how to use their bodies in a, in a fashion that does not cause injury. And then we have onsite emergency care, like that's important, but it's not just. Because an ambulance will just throw them in the back and take them off the field, and when that's not always necessary, they can. And when that's not always necessary, they can stay on the field, they can wrap it a certain way. And then healthy athletes are in school more often, and that affects academics. That is my pitch for an athletic trainer.
So the, the other piece of that, that there have been students, family members, and community members that have asked for this.
Oh, yeah.
As part of high school, because there are students that can get rehabbed and they're not necessarily getting that. They might be, but they could be getting it immediately right on the field. So I make a motion to accept this.
Also, just for those of you who think litigiously, having, always having an athletic trainer onsite helps in case, you know, it ensures that we have some protections and we have, we're getting, that kids are getting the right care.
Do I have a second for the discussion?
I'll save you.
Thank you.
One question. So it says here it's forty hours a week, two hundred and ten, yeah, two hundred and ten days a year.
Yeah.
Which is more than a teacher contract.
Preseason starts in August.
Okay. So forty hours a week, what are they doing with... I'm not sure if I know an electric trainer. It says, see additional documentation. We don't have enough documentation. So I'm not exactly sure I know what an electric trainer does for forty hours a week in their... They go to games, I know that.
They go to games, they go to practices, they can attend away games as well, which is very helpful. What they could be doing during the day, we have this beautiful little room, we have an athletic training room. They could be seeing students during team time, students who come down, get their, the ankles rewrapped. They would be, they could work with our PE teachers. And we have tons of injuries, sports-related injuries that happen during the school day as well. So there's a lot that could be happening during the school day for rehabilitation.
Right, Sarah. What? On your justification, you said it's required by law. You tell us what, what law?
Well, so we have to, at football games, we do have to have an athletic trainer or some sort of, we always have to have some medical professional available to the students. That's it.
It's only for the football games or track meet or...
Yeah.
Whatever. Only for the, only for the events?
Games, yes, events.
Yes.
No, they weren't at, at cross-country meets or...
Go ahead.
What type of certification is required? Is it full EMS certification?
No, it's a different certification altogether, and I don't know what it is called. I'd have to...
Athletic trainer.
Athletic, I don't, there's, there's lots of letters and I don't know what those letters are.
So for the medical side of it then, if there are five games going on at once, you know, where will they be? Will they be offsite? Will they be?
So...
Where the most games are being?
They would be at the home game, where the, you know, home most of the time, where we have often things going on at once, you know, with a radio to, and then we have the car for them to get quickly to one site or another. So that they would spend most of their time here on this campus. But if there was, we're in playoffs, they, you know, teams would take our athletic trainer with them.
What's, what's the cost of complying today?
What do you mean?
What's it?
You said it's required by law, so I'm assuming the school is paying for somebody at...
Yeah, I don't know how much.
How much was that?
Allison, we contracted Allison. I don't know how much that is.
On that same line, does EMS charge to be here?
Yes.
I do not know how much though. I don't remember. Do you know about Allison?
No. Uh, one thing I can tell you is that three years ago, we were in an agreement with Chester Medical. They provided our athletic trainer. That agreement, they backed ours because they couldn't find their own athletic trainers for their various programs because there was a shortage. We went in and started interviewing people. This was when the salary was, I think, twenty thousand dollars we had set aside. The average person or the average that they asked for per diem was a hundred dollars an hour. Or that was into the over a hundred thousand dollars just in salary. So that's what we were looking at, and then we bumped it up to about forty thousand. Still couldn't get any takers at that rate. So that's pretty difficult for us, but the per diem rate is pretty high.
And I, we can get that information.
For positions like this, do we do salary surveys? Have we done a salary survey for this position?
No.
Yeah.
Isn't it safe to say that we've never had an athletic trainer?
We have.
I mean, other than working, contracting out.
They're not here.
They don't work there. None of them ever worked for Fall Morning.
Just on contract, like, yeah.
Got our employees.
Never. I thought that there was when my kids were...
We had a first time one, I think, once.
Yeah, when my kids were, when my kids were in NEFLA, the quality was questionable, but they're still not required in NEFLA.
Dave Walker was a teacher here and he received a small stipend to serve as the athletic trainer on top of that. That's who that person was. I am me.
Well, you know, because of football. You've been in football for years, so.
Do we know what surrounding schools are doing? Everybody seems to be in the same boat. Do they have full-time? Do they have part-time?
Uh, there's many who have full-time, but I don't know the, the, their pay. There's a lot of part-time. But I couldn't, I couldn't give you a list. Like, I could come back with it.
Okay, I think that would be, to go along with the salary survey, I'd like to know, you know, how many have full-time, how many have part-time, and what that looks like, or...
I think we need qualifications for the position and the job description too.
So we're tabling this as well until December?
Yeah, that's a hundred thousand dollars.
A, a list of how much we've paid for other places that are available.
Good.
Can I, is, is there somebody? So athletic trainer increased by fifty-six thousand, so I'm, Laurie, can I assume that fifty-six minus the ninety-six gives us what we're paying now?
Forty thousand, like, in the legend, so.
Oh, Jesus, what? I'm not good with that.
I'm sorry, I didn't read that part, so you're ahead of me.
Well, we're not entirely sure that we could get someone like ninety-six.
Well, well, that includes the benefits too, so.
What were you projecting for benefits for health? Two-person or one?
I think you always projected the two.
Yeah, we've been doing two-person pretty consistently. So we had, yeah, two percent, two-person at eighty percent, salary at sixty thousand. Chance to retire at seventy-six, spike of just about five. And the health is like twenty-two, nine percent.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to the next hundred thousand.
Everybody, good for pointing.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Oh, sorry.
Oh, no. I'm wondering if we could have some clarification on, did someone say it is required by law to have it or not required? So if it is required, I don't, I think to know the RSA that says that we're required to have it.
Required by NHIA, that's for football games.
Okay.
I believe, but I couldn't know.
All right, now we can move on to the next.
Okay. I am asking for a total of ninety-five dollars, four hundred, nine thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars, uh, which is eighty-five thousand dollars for salary, two-person health and dental with the Perkins grant covering sixteen thousand dollars of it for a full-time CTE director. And this first and foremost, we're looking for, to build our programs. One of the things that a full-time CTE director would help us do is build our ELO program and learning opportunities. And perhaps some of our offerings here in the CTE department. The CTE director, there's a lot of rigorous federal states hoops and regulations that they have to jump through, never mind the Perkins grant requirements. We really want someone who will build community and industry partnerships and support teachers and professional development. I mean, there's a lot that maybe full-time person can do. Grant management, strategic planning of our CTE center, which has a lot of potential. We would love to see, would love to see us reaching out with this program. I would love to see us reaching out with this program. I know there's a lot of other people who do as well. There's more opportunity to individualize things for students with a full-time position, especially through our ELOs, and that's a big, that's a big deal. Right now, our ELO manager is just doing it for a small stipend and half-time because they also do, part-time, they also do other things in the building. And that limits what we can do with our extended learning opportunities. There's a lot of compliance and documentation, the KIT reporting. You know, this, we can pursue additional grants with someone who's on full-time. Track students' success. We would have increased student engagement, hands-on, experiential learning, enhanced community partnerships, greater alignment of ELOs with workforce themes and post-secondary pathways, improve student outcomes. Uh, there's a, there's a lot, there's a mountain of reasons why a full-time CTE director would be a great move for.
I make the motion to approve, just to get it onto the table for discussion for a second. I have one question. Sure.
Oh, so your first sentence here says our regional area requires a full-time CTE director?
This is what Deb has told me.
There is no, it, it doesn't exist yet.
It hasn't been presented. It hasn't been approved yet. Yeah, but if it were to be, which is the one that we want that gives our students fifty percent of our fees, that would be in there.
Is, is that defined in the contract what full-time CTE director means? You guys might part-time right now, right? Because you're a CTE director.
We have a CTE coordinator, and that is part-time position.
So it does that mean pretty much, we have a senior agreement, like, you know? I'd be questioning this.
They'll work on it.
Do you think, do you think Deb would have further information for us at the next meeting?
Deb and so would absolutely have more information. She's well-versed and would be, she will be out though, or which Deb, Deb and so. For the... She'll be out for the next meeting. September. Yeah.
I know we talked last meeting about, in particular, the electrical program, how we can't, there's a hundred kids on the waiting list. Talking about adding programs here and things like that. There's a lot of opportunities here for career and technical ed expansion. And so I think there's a lot of ideas about bringing programs here, which is something a full-time director could do.
Does anybody run any potential numbers on revenue offsets?
Instructor who can teach electrical.
We need to be creative here. So there is a program, there is a program in...
And it's a touchy subject with Keen, so it would have to be broached carefully.
And, and that's something that I have been pushing, that I was pushing very hard last year, and I would love to be pushing hard again to increase the options for our kids so that they don't have to go to Keen. Right now, they don't have to at all.
Advocate for those things.
I just think it's gonna be so hard to get an ADA from either this board, well alone the finance. There's just so many questions and like the one Jamie had.
I would, I, I think that, that there is... I think that there's a lot to be said for this position. Uh, my concern is that in the financial environment that we currently live, I'm not, I'm kind of where Kevin is in a couple of ways, both in terms of the cost to the individual towns and also not knowing what... I don't know where we're going nationwide, and I'm very concerned about our budget and I'm very concerned about him. I, I am a strong advocate. I don't think there's any question about that for, for, for her, for this position to, to be created full-time for, for, for these kinds of positions, to, to, these kinds of opportunities to be available for our kids. I'm not sure that that's strongly supported by our current administration at the federal level. And I am very concerned about cuts coming in, in terms of our Perkins money, in terms of any money that's coming. And so I'm very, I would like to see, I would like to see, maybe, I, I would support this next year possibly if, because I'd have a better idea of where we were. And also, I'd have, getting some ideas in terms of really get that, having that, that agreement with Keen finally finalized, getting our kids to be able to have some more, some more choice, being able to, and, and know specifically what are those programs that we can build here? How much is that gonna cost us to build more programs? Because that's gonna cost us too. And, because that's gonna be another teacher, it's gonna be, you know, more. So I would like to, I would like, my feeling is not, I don't support it for this year, but I would support it in terms of building the ideas for it. I'd be happy to be on any committee that was in existence to help to build towards that.
I'm in favor of what Sarah said.
I'm ready to vote, because I have filled the same way, Sarah.
All right, all in favor?
The motion is on adding the CTE director.
If you're calling a vote today, I'm gonna abstain because I don't feel like I have enough information. When, when you're gonna bring a new physician to be added to a school district, I think it's very important to have the certifications required for the physician and to have a job description for us to look at, so we know the write-ups lovely, so, but, so we know like what we're hiring for. You know, and to, and, and to their point, which I didn't realize, sorry I missed the last meeting if it was discussed, about whatever's going on between us and Keen, or how this impacts us and River Valley, or all of those pieces, right? And then I would want to know if we're looking at an expansion of a program that's been a hotbed of discussion for many years. You know, what, what are the expenses and revenues? What, are there any offsetting revenues? What do we hope to do or gain by expanding it? So that should be a part of the discussion. Yeah, and what happened to the Perk? I mean, we used to have a person that oversaw Perkins, and so where did, what happened in, you know, like a little bit of...
So I just wanted to speak to the, the revenue stream. I'd be more than happy to do some sort of study like that. I need to know what program we're looking at to be able to...
Yeah, absolutely. I get that.
So, so there's, we aren't even to that stage.
Sure.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily saying no. I just don't think we're at a spot right now where we can say no. Yeah, I'm not necessarily saying no. I just don't think we're at a spot right now where we can say no. Yes, like there has to be a lot more.
No, I get, and I get that, yeah.
So is he intend to? Vote no on the motion for this year, or do you table it for a year? And we're being asked.
I don't wish to table for years, up or down.
Yeah, you wrote it up or down. Based on the information I have today, I would vote no, because I don't have enough information to make an informed choice.
All right.
I think this is something that we desperately need.
I agree, Joe.
I think that this needs to be done and I don't give a rat's ass about who's in the White House. So you can put me on it.
We agree. We all agree with you, but I think. To answer the taxpayers, you need to have more information on the subject when we're asked to be spent.
Well, I mean, there's an excellent job description here. Just read it. Pretty much all of the things there.
Are we still discussing it?
Oh, okay.
Just a safe job description.
Sorry, my opinion.
No, this is fine.
Doesn't agree with you.
No, you can vote no. I can vote yes.
Echo Sarah. Like, I'm a huge believer of CTE, like one of the museum that's all about manufacturing, okay? But I think you need a full plan. I mean, if you're thinking about bringing in like. A manufacturing program, it's a million dollars worth of equipment that's needed to train people in, in within this. If you look at Keen, they've got millions of dollars worth of equipment and supplies there just to support those programs. I'm on an advisory board for River Valley Tech Center and I know how much money we put in every single year. To make that program happen. So I think before you spend the $96,000 or $90,000. I think it's good to have a full-blown plan in place to show you, you know, where you want to go. What do you want to accomplish and what those incremental costs will be.
Thank you.
I need this question.
All right. Yeah.
Pardon me? Where are we voting on now?
On the CTE director, are you in favor or?
I, I was in favor at my store.
Jamie, are you abstaining or are you voting?
No, I have my hand up for no, because I said based on the information I have here.
No, Sarah, not there. You were in.
No, based off of what I, and what's before me right now.
The motion. Does not pass for this particular budget cycle, but obviously there's a desire for more information. Thank you. Thanks for hearing me out.
Can you let us know what is budgeted for? Because obviously there's some monies that are budgeted in here. If there were oversight of CTE or we wouldn't have it. On site, right? So, so I mean, that's not. I know it's on the write-off about the Perkins $16,000, but is, you know, is that the only money that's in this budget for oversight of CTE? And I don't need it right now, Lori, I'm just saying.
No, I mean, there, there is money for their, for her.
Are we going to move on to the next equation?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. I am from the board to request that 3,500. Put into the local budget first so that we can continue to offer our year-long NHDI program to our fifth or eighth grade students. These students get to participate in this program once a week where guests come in to teach them choreography. But it's so much more. It's about team building and during the Memorial Day weekend, they get to go to Keen State Redford Art Center with multiple other schools around the area, do a big performance for over 200 people every single time. There's a live orchestra. It's just a great experience for these students. We're trying to continue to build the arts to really showcase these students' talents. And we continue to have 15 to 20 student participants each year. We've been fortunate enough that the Fall Mountain Education Endowment Association has been funding it for the past two. And I worry that if that doesn't happen, that we don't have an opportunity for those students. So after three successful years, I'm asking for just to be budgeted. To give support to students.
I make a motion. A second. Great for a moment. Cut your sub-line, right?
Well, I saw it said new program, but you said it's been going on.
And so we, yeah, it's been grant funded. We've done our dance residencies with our pre-K to fourth or fifth grade. And then we, three years ago, started the year-long res, uh, year's residency for our fifth through eighth grade students.
So if you don't do the, you do it all the time via this, then that grant would be open to other, other schools within the district.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for clarification because I'm on the page, but there is no title. It's not all filled out here. So what, what's your working title of this program?
It's the New Hampshire Dance Institute.
Thank you.
Is this, so it says that after at least, at least 17 students participating in this program. So this is something that's open to all students five through eight?
Yes.
How come only 17 students participate?
So it's, it's during the school day. Some students don't want to miss study hall. Because we always put it during our intervention time, so they're not missing any classes or anything like that. It's during the day. So we have, this is the school piece that, that we have to cover. And then there's a $200 piece that families need to cover, cover. But there's fundraising that students do. A lot of students and families are able to just cover that whole thing. There's tuition assistance through the program. NHDI comes in and says, any dancer that wants to dance will dance. And we've had that all the way through. This program just isn't for everyone, but we're truly trying to, to build the arts. And that's a, we're, we're trying to bring in other experiences, opportunities for students.
So why isn't this offered in every school?
They didn't get a grant? I don't know. It's just, they may have not applied.
Yeah, do they know about it?
Maybe they do their own thing within their school with their own something, people.
I know a lot of the schools, I'm not speaking for you guys, but do a lot of the, the week-long residency. And that's what we started off with. And then we were approached because we had a lot of students that were interested and they talked about doing the year long and we gave it a try. They love it.
How is it doing it this year?
This is just on hopeful budget, right?
Yeah.
Dance away.
Yeah.
So essentially it's similar to a basketball team or something like that. You can choose to do it or not.
And they, they have the opportunity to do it for a full year and it's during the school day, which makes it a lot easier to access.
This wouldn't be a specific employee. This would be, this is to pay for the program?
Pay for the, the initial fee for the program. Yeah.
That's why the position. All in question.
Sure. All in favor? Motion passes.
Can we go back one? Sorry. I'm just taking notes and I think I'm just. The athletic trainer that you're bringing back, right? You're, you're coming back with information? We table, we didn't note that one.
We tabled it.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I just want to, your question regarding Perkins. $19,599.73 is what is in the budget now. She receives in addition to the 16 from Perkins.
So we're spending 35 now. Thank you.
Did I miss any of me justification?
Need one question. Who, is anybody here familiar with, are you familiar with Perkins at all?
Just through my, no.
Can you find out if we went to a more full-time position? You get more money?
Did we delay the matrix until we have this information? Is that be good or?
We did delay until the first meeting in December so that we could absorb all of this.
So the yellow ones are the new ones?
Yeah, there's a, over on the right-hand side. Does anybody have any other questions while we're all here? All right, I just want to know if anybody got any more questions. I'm trying to finish the meeting.
Yes, I have a question. I think that's a point of here or whatever. So for the items that were approved. You want me to add those? Do you want me to wait to add those to the budget until we have a discussion and you guys tell me, give me any direction of anything else you want changed? Or do this and it becomes version two, then the board is adopting or to pass on?
I think we can add. Jay in December.
Wait, wait. Does that get added to the budget before the budget committee votes on it or does it?
Yeah, so the board usually prepares a budget to pass off to the budget committee to review and.
That was my question on timing, because I want to be sure that if we're going to be adding these pieces, that we get it in time for our next meeting.
Just making sure.
When's the next school board meeting?
December 9th.
Oh, that's right.
Right, but we voted it yes today, so that's why I'm asking. Put it in now? So could you put in what was yesed now?
I could and then.
Could we do a?
I consider it electronically instead of paper.
Yes, could we do, I think we'll be all right. Let's try it. Or print it for us. Can we do a pro forma if the other ones that were tabled were added? Like a, you know what I mean?
And what if?
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a pro forma, but just jam those into whatever line and see what.
So, so I'm, I'm being hesitant. So yes, I can do that, obviously, but um. We table everything else, some of it for like next year.
No, 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 this year, just this year. So we would, so we would put in like Justin's, you would put in Justin's numbers. You would put in whatever else we approved.
Right, so I put in all the approved and then what would it look like if the other?
Also the, you tabled, oh, that's true. You really can't with the bands because we're looking at maybe a smaller game.
Right.
Yeah, never mind. We could do it. We can do it. We can do it.
Like the athletic trainer, is that a consideration? Do you have? Information or is it?
So yeah, it means I want to take a look at it.
I think it doesn't mess around. I mean, we'll go.
Doesn't mean we'll say yes, but. Hey, we hired ours. We only paying ours, just so you know, because we have one. It's a trainer, right? Athletic trainer. Hanover pays theirs $56,112. However, indeed, in New Hampshire is $109,000. That's like Nashua, Manchester, whatever.
Now, it's like, are you in the backyard of?
So if you need a job description, we have all our.
I'll take, I'll take up for the budget committee. Is there any interest in continuing our meeting now with these items before?
Not this time.
So let her put the stuff in and then we can.
We can always add.
So I have this for you guys, so I don't know if you saw it, but I'm already, I was going to make a call. The answers to some of our.
I saw an email, but I haven't.
I just happened to look. I went, I talked to Turner, didn't work. There you go.
Our meeting is for something here. We should have another one right after this.
Not, not if theirs is the time.
We're there in a lot of information. Do we want a different data? So the.
We're discussing.
So understandingly that the mic is still hot, whatever you're talking about is still being broadcast. So let's come together and we'll discuss our training day.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts.
Yes, nice job. The seventh.
We, we were meeting, we were by the. Make the fifth be in the administration date to have the budget finalized, but that's not going to happen.
Why? Not going to finalize on the fifth? Lori, you're not going to finalize on the fifth? You're going to finalize as much as you have on the fifth, right? Other than the ones we tabled. Are you guys having the administration finalization of your budget?
On 12/5.
Yeah, we're, um, yeah.
Debbie's not going to be there?
Yeah, Debbie won't be here, um, which is, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um. We're going to discuss it, but I, I don't know what else, I mean.
If there be any changes.
Yeah, the only thing is, well, you know, we'll look at the subs.
And all the pieces that we talked about tonight. Okay, thank you.
But I don't know how much they'll repeat that.
And then, so then what's on your, so then your agenda for 12/12?
They're bringing back more information to us. On the table, the 12/9.
But then they have another administrative day on 12/12, I thought.
I don't know.
I don't know. It's, it's, we blocked out time as it needed. Okay.
I'm just trying.
We're trying to set our meeting.
Yeah.
When is the default budget going to be set?
Yeah, I'll have that soon.
You don't have that for the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll have that for the next meeting, okay.
Instead of the seven?
First, the Saturday meeting would be all day meeting.
I think I'm available. I think I'm available.
Yeah, I don't think we can do it later than that. Too close to Saturday, yeah, I'm late.
Am I hearing you?
Yeah, it's gonna.
Well, so you get a lot of it here. We need extra information to work on.
No, on the seven, doesn't make sense to do that.
No, unless we just want to go through what we have.
No, and I don't want to do that.
I think the 14th, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I'm only going to be ready by the second. I haven't gone through the budget much, so, and we haven't asked any, you know, to, with our teams. We haven't even started to do that, so. Yeah.
Right, so that would give us a little more.
That would give us a little breathing.
Is everybody available on the 14th? Is everybody on the 14th?
I believe so.
Yes.
Yes. So does that, so in the email that I sent out saying that we want our questions by the fifth. That give us more buffer to go through to meet with our team, to like, we were going to go. Line, I'm, I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, I think, and I mean, we kind of did some of the line-by-line tonight, right? So it gives us a little basis and it's on tapes and it helps.
Yeah.
And then we can hopefully still maybe have those questions for that Monday, the night from the board meetings.
Okay.
And then get them, get them back.
So then, for clarification, the email that I sent out saying. So then for clarification, the email that I sent out saying here's teams, who's reading the lines that you're responsible for? Questions for the fifth is now questions for the ninth. And then we're going to compile them all together and then we're going to send them to the board as one, one document.
Before the ninth.
Because for the ninth.
Then if we could circulate that, that question document amongst ourselves, we may be, from tonight's meeting, we may have some of the answers, right? I mean.
It should be, I think it's on the, I think I put it on the drive. I will check to make sure.
All right. And I will ask them for the, for the updated version as soon as possible. I did send a version. I did send this, this version. I emailed it, but I didn't know if it was, I started moving, not knowing.
I'm just working with the spreadsheet that you sent and I don't know how much that's going to change.
Well, there, I sent another one. Did you do the one I just sent you today?
The one, yes.
Okay, that's the latest thing, right?
Yeah, because it looks like there were nine vacancies for spread.
So she's going to, after tonight, with all the questions that we went through, she's going to go through it all again to make sure everything's into your point about how, how tight is it? So I think that as soon as I get a version out from there, because I need to take a look at something's going on with the abortion formula in the background. She wanted me to look at it. It's not driving her. So I'll just take a look at it to fix that.
So we should wait until she does updates it before we.
You could probably finalize that.
Yeah, I, I think we've got draft your questions.
Well, I have, yeah, I have, I have, yeah, several actually.
I mean, this is latest and greatest and I think I circled all the areas where there was questions that I think they're going to go back and look at. So I don't mind. I want to get a minute to do it, but I'll try. I don't mind going through and highlighting the ones that I know that they're going to be looking at. That will probably move.
Because the questions that came up today or some of the answers certainly address some of the questions I had. But the way we went through it was completely different than how I pulled together all those lines, you know, the numbers we're supposed to look at.
That's why I think if we shared that, the questions, then, and we looked at it, each of us might remember a piece or have notes on our own.
I'm going to make sure that that's on the drive.
So I'm going to give this.
Before we, before we move on.
So uh could we recite the, the laundry list here? When, when are we getting the list of questions? What's that date? List of questions are due when?
Prior to the ninth.
Or the morning of the night.
And it's going to be on the drive so that everybody can update the document on the drive and then we won't have to go with different versions.
So then we'll review maybe on the fourteenth as a team at that meeting, do you think?
With answers, hopefully. We're going to send it to, given to them or not.
That sounds okay.
It answers that for the fourteen. Otherwise, yeah.
So, so we'll have five days to answer our questions and then we'll come together on the fourteen.
And I, the copy is broken, but that was mailed, that was mailed, emailed from Debbie.
I thought so. Anything else to come before the committee? All right, we'll.
Make motion second.
Chris and Amanda, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.